Okay, are we already recording? Okay, folks, I apologize for this delay. We are still waiting for another couple of members to show up, or at least one of them, so that we can have a quorum. It's now 6:05. We are expecting a couple of people to be here any minute, so I guess we're just going to wait a couple of minutes to formally get started. Or, I guess, okay, I guess we can do the... Okay, then I will call the meeting to order, and we will, I invite you to join me to begin the meeting with a salute to the flag. Laura, can we have a roll call of commissioners present, please?
Commissioner Levy.
Here.
Commissioner Landry. Commissioner Mulder. Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner West.
I see a fourth commissioner just walking in the door, so no worries, it happens. You did, no, 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 we knew. Maybe before we get to the consent agenda, we can take another roll call, since we may have a fifth by that time. Welcome. Item C on the agenda is agenda modifications. Director Ford, do we have any agenda modifications?
We do, Chair. And the first thing I'd like to call your attention to is that we have two items that are labeled rather oddly on the agenda tonight. One is called new business, and that has the sign ordinance, the draft sign ordinance under it, and then we have public hearings. The way this should have worked is that the public hearings should have been before the sign ordinance, and the commission had asked that, due to the number of items, public hearings on this agenda, that the sign ordinance not be on this agenda. So we looked at moving it to the end of the agenda, but there are still eight items to be heard tonight, which may not leave sufficient time to do a presentation of the sign ordinance and allow public comment. We have tried to contact people to let them know that it would be continued to the meeting of November 2nd, but we would ask that the commission continue this to November 2nd. Since it is on the agenda, you are obligated to open public comment.
Yeah.
And at least take comment on the continuance.
Yeah.
And then I'd just like to point out one other minor thing on the agenda. It says the next meeting will be October 26th, and it says it starts at 5:30. That will actually start at 6:00.
Thank you for catching that and making that clear. Okay, so when we get to where the sign ordinance appeared on the agenda, we will allow public comment, at least on the matter of the continuance. If people cannot attend the November 2nd meeting, I will take, we can allow public comment on the matter substantively, but I would encourage folks who are interested in the sign ordinance to simply tune in or come back on November 2nd, since that's when we'll actually get into the substance of that item. Okay, that brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone either in the room, or on Zoom, or phone, who wishes to comment on a matter pertaining to the planning commission's jurisdiction, which is not on our item, on our agenda for tonight? I do see one hand raised. Darius Lane on Zoom. First of all, I just want to make sure, is there anyone in the audience wishing to comment on a matter not on the agenda tonight? Okay, don't see any hands in the room. I do see one hand on Zoom, so, Darius Lane, go ahead, you have three minutes. Darius Lane, are you able, it looks like you are unmuted, but we can't hear you. Let's see, there's one other hand raised, so why don't we go to that other hand, and then we'll come back to Darius Lane afterwards and see if he's able to speak up. I would recognize Rudy Hess on Zoom now. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
Perfect, thank you guys so much. My name is Rudy Hess, and I would like to, first of all, say thank you to the City Council, thank you to any members of the public who are taking their time to tune in tonight, and I would just like to take this slightly less than three minutes here for everyone to remember the USS Liberty. On June 8th in 1967, Israeli forces attacked the USS Liberty, killing 34 U.S. Navy personnel by air and sea attacks. 174 additional service members were injured in the attack.
Sir, is this pertaining to a matter of land use or the planning commission? Because this is not the place for...
It will be, it's just an introduction, if you don't mind me finishing my introduction.
Okay.
Thank you so much. So, like I said, 174 additional service members were injured during the attack, and then Israel claims that their intelligence agency identified it as an Egyptian ship, but it was an American ship, and the Israeli Air Force and Navy decided that they needed to attack the lifeboat specifically to stop any Americans from escaping. Now, the reason why this is relevant with the land use issue that we are here discussing tonight is that BlackRock is a corporation in the United States that owns a significant percentage, and I'm talking greater than 30%, of all land available to be purchased. And BlackRock itself is a Jewish organization, and right now I will listen to you, the founders. And again, this is land use, these guys buy, purchase, and control a lot of the land use here in the continental United States, as well as Hawaii.
No.
And, let's say, Alaska.
This is not appropriate for our meeting tonight, so...
How is it not appropriate? I know the ADL pays your guys' paychecks. I have a freedom of information request...
Can we cut him off, please?
Right now, that the ADL is paying you. So please let me continue, I have one minute.
Can we please mute? Chair, can we please mute this?
Yes.
This has nothing to do with the Humboldt County land use. Wow, thank you.
Wow. Apologies for that, folks. There was one other person wishing to comment. Darius Lane, are you still wishing to comment? That hand has gone down.
So, Chair, would it be appropriate to remind everyone, they are allowed to speak under the First Amendment, but people can be held liable for words that they do say, so I think it'd be good to get that on the record.
Okay, as Commissioner Mulder said, people can be held liable for their speech, even if it is First Amendment protected. But moreover, the First Amendment doesn't allow anyone to talk about anything in a planning commission meeting. We have guidelines, we have a set of issues that fall before us, and I will recognize Darius Lane, your hand was up before, if you're able to speak now on a matter pertaining to land use or the planning commission's work, please go ahead, you have three minutes. We're still not able to hear you. We've tried to hear this gentleman, but we're not able to hear them, so I'm going to close public comment on matters not on the agenda, and again, I apologize for letting that go on as long as it did. Hate and antisemitism has no place before this commission. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. We will go through the consent agenda and see if there are any matters which either the commission or a member of the public wishes to comment on or pull for discussion. It's a pretty straightforward agenda tonight, so I don't know that we'll need to do that, but the first item is the review and approval of the September 21st action summary. Any commissioners have any comments about that? No? Yes?
I just want to make sure that we did acknowledge that Commissioner Mulder arrived just as we were taking roll. I think we'd already called his name.
Thank you. No, I apologize. I held off on doing another roll call vote because I thought we might have Commissioner Mitchell by this time, but since we don't, and this is an action item, we should take another roll call just to acknowledge that, or just acknowledge in the record that Commissioner Mulder is here. Yes, Director Ford?
Yes, thank you, and I do note that Commissioner Mitchell appears to be on Zoom.
Oh.
And we have not gone through a process for him to be able to participate remotely.
Yeah.
So he can be there as an observer currently, but unless there's some other emergency that would need to be addressed, he can't participate remotely.
My understanding is that he's on his way here and probably just wanted to observe the beginning, but since we can't recognize him as a participating member, but thank you for noting that. But since we do have a quorum and we have not, do we have to take another roll call, or can we just get it in the record that Commissioner Mulder is now present?
Laura, did you get Commissioner Mulder in the roll?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Thank you for the reminder, Commissioner Scavdal. Okay, so again, the consent agenda, first item is September 21st action summary. Everybody okay with that remaining on consent? Second item is the October 5th action summary. Anyone wishing to pull that for discussion? Okay, we'll leave that on consent. The third item is Emerald Mountain Coast LLC in the Blue Lake area. This is an item, a project that is being recommended for continuance to November 2nd. So our vote tonight will simply be to continue that to the next regular meeting. Anyone wishing to comment on that continuance? No. Fourth item is High Art LLC project in the Willow Creek area. Again, that item is being recommended for continuance to November 2nd. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the continuance of that project? Seeing none, we will leave that on consent. And finally, the last item on the consent calendar is John Pickerily, conditional use permit in the Willow Creek area. That item is being recommended to continue to a date uncertain. Is there anyone wishing to comment on the continuance of that item? Okay, seeing none, we have the five items that appear on consent, all still on consent.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion from Commissioner Mulder.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner O'Neill. Any further discussion of the motion before we vote? Okay, then how about a voice vote on the approval of the consent calendar? All in favor, please say yea.
Aye.
Yea, aye. Aye or yea works. Any opposed? No. Okay, the consent calendar is moved, is approved unanimously. Now, as the director noted, we come to the next item on the agenda, which is the sign ordinance. It was a mistake to have it here on the agenda, and in fact, we are going to, we've been asked to continue that to the next regular meeting, which is November 2nd. But if anyone either in the audience or on Zoom wishes to comment on the matter of it being continued, or if you're not able to attend the November 2nd meeting and wish to make your comments on that item now, I would welcome that. However, since we're not going to discuss it or hear a presentation on it, it would be best for anyone who can be here on November 2nd who's interested to hold your comments till then. Anyone wishing to comment on this item? I don't see any hands on Zoom or phone either.
I'll make a motion to move the sign ordinance to November 2nd.
We have a motion to continue the sign ordinance to November 2nd.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Mulder, seconded by Commissioner Scavdal. Any further discussion before we vote on that? Okay, then how about a voice vote on continuing the sign ordinance to November 2nd? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, unanimous approval of continuing the sign ordinance to November 2nd. And again, apologies to anyone who did not get the notification earlier today that that was going to happen, but I appreciate that the staff, the planning staff, did make an effort to reach out to everyone who was, who had commented on the item before. Okay, now we come to public hearings, and we do have a pretty full calendar tonight of eight public hearing items, all generally in the Supply Creek area of Willow Creek Hoopa. The first one is 707 Cultivation Company, conditional use permit and special permit, and I would invite Cliff to give us a presentation on that item, please.
Thank you, Chair Levy and members of the Planning Commission. My name's Cliff Johnson. I'm going to share my screen and present the 707 cultivation conditional use permit. But before I do that, I want to go into some, provide some context for all of the projects that are on the agenda tonight. They are, they all share a somewhat unique and a unique history through the county's application process. So I'm just waiting for, there we go. So all of the projects on the agenda tonight are in the Supply Creek sub watershed, which is located generally in the Willow Creek area. This just shows you the approximate location in the county. And this map is showing the Hoopa Square shaded in gray, and the Supply Creek watershed is mostly located in the Hoopa Square with some of the watershed, which is shown here in red, which is outside of the square and owned by mostly private property owners. The Supply Creek watershed does, Supply Creek itself actually provides a substantial amount of water to the Hoopa Tribe for their domestic, commercial, and agricultural uses. And early in our application process, we referred these applications to the Hoopa Tribe, and they expressed concern, given the high density of cannabis applications in the Supply Creek watershed. So this shows you right here, I'll kind of flip back and forth, but again, in red, the Supply Creek watershed area outside of the Hoopa Square, and you can see on this that there's a large concentration of cannabis applications that are in that watershed. And so they expressed concern primarily for some issues relative to water quality, water quantity, aquatic habitat, and riparian habitat. And they engaged with the county fairly early on in the review process in 2017 and 2018 to express those concerns, and the county committed to them to undertake some studies to try to address those concerns, identify whether there were significant issues or measures that could be taken to resolve any issues. And so working with the group of project applicants in the Supply Creek area, the applicants funded a couple of technical studies. One was a water quality study that AM Baird Engineering completed in 2020, which took samples from Supply Creek itself at a few different locations and tested those for various pollutants that they might expect from runoff from cannabis sites, as well as the pH level of the stream, turbidity, and provided an analysis of what those studies showed. They did show that Supply Creek was maintaining healthy river conditions, stream conditions, and that there was no evidence of significant runoff from the cannabis activity. We did also work to have a surface water availability study prepared, which was prepared and submitted in 2020 by HMC Engineering. And what that looked at was the overall amount of water that would be available in the Supply Creek watershed, and compared that to the estimated use from these cannabis applications. And so what that study found was that there was, in even the driest year, there would be approximately 0.2% of the annual runoff that was being intercepted in the Supply Creek area for cannabis applications. Those were forwarded to the Hoopa Tribe, and they actually conducted and worked with a engineering firm, TG and Associates, to look at those studies and also conduct their own study to identify what issues there might be with these cannabis sites in Supply Creek. The results of that study were shared with Humboldt County in early 2023, and what that found generally mirrored what the other two studies had found, but basically, even during high demand and low flow situations on Supply Creek, the permitted diversions would account to approximately 0.1% of the water available in Supply Creek. The study also identified that Supply Creek, compared to surrounding watersheds, actually has a very low level of dependence on groundwater. So the groundwater in the Supply Creek area is not heavily contributing to the water flow of Supply Creek itself. And the study concluded that the largest threat to water quality in the Supply Creek was from sediment delivery from roads. That assessment did provide some recommendations that we tried to put forth in these permit conditions that you'll see. So those were that we should be requiring water meters to track the use of water, establish rain catchment systems, implement water quality best management practices to maintain roads and stream crossings, and to conduct annual site visits to ensure compliance with these measures. In June of this year, we did receive correspondence from the tribe, and I underlined what I think is the key takeaway from this particular correspondence, is that they found that the conclusions reached by their study corroborate the findings of the county and applicants, there are other environmental studies that they had done. They did attach a recommendation that they had sent to the Hoopa Office of Tribal Attorney that they were recommending that a formal response be provided to request annual site visit reports and water meter readings be available to the tribe upon request, and to ensure that they're being maintained in a way that reduces sediment delivery to waters of Supply Creek. So our approach on these projects, which you hear about today as we move into each of them, are we tried to work with CFW staff to conduct site visits and address potential impacts to water quality and habitat, to require substantial water storage, and so in most of these instances, you'll see that we are recommending the addition of a large amount of water storage, usually 50% or more. We've tried to look at the sources of water for each of these cultivation areas, and if they have a more of a high-producing well, we may be recommending a little bit less water storage. If there are some limitations on their water available on the site, we would be recommending a lot more than 50% of water storage, and you'll see that as we work through these projects. And then also to make sure that the water quality recommendations that have been prepared for these projects to meet the state water board requirements have been implemented as project conditions. So before we get into 707 cultivation project, I just wanted to pause and see if anybody had any questions about the Supply Creek information that we just went over.
I see Commissioner O'Neill.
You had an email up there, was it an official email from the tribe? It looked like a Gmail account.
So this is actually an email from a employee of the Hoopa Environmental Protection Office, or whatever it is called. So that is somebody that works with the tribe, yes.
Brian is? The Brian person who's using...
Brian McAhee, yes.
And they represent the Hoopa Tribe?
They work for a, for basically the Environmental Protection Unit of the tribe. And so here you could see what they were, and if you read this, they were recommending that the Office of Tribal Attorney provide more correspondence to the county. It does not appear that they've, that the Office of Tribal Attorney has done that.
So there's no official, because typically it would come from an elected body or...
Correct, yes.
Not just an employee.
Yeah, and but what you'll note here, they state that they've become aware of the October 12th, 2022 letter, where we did request a meeting with the tribal council to go over these technical studies. We did not hear any, we did not get any response to that letter, or to follow-up emails or phone calls that were made. So we did get this response, however, from the employee at the Environmental Protection Unit, who was referring basically to that study that the Hoopa Tribe did take, did undertake.
Director Ford?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that we made a promise to go back to the tribal council before we came to the planning commission with this, because we wanted to make sure that they had the opportunity to review the technical studies. I don't know how many communications we sent asking for that opportunity, and that was never responded to.
And they were sent to the...
The tribal chair.
Oh, the tribal chair.
I would also like to say, Chair, that Commissioner Mitchell has arrived, and we should probably do a new roll call before we get into the next item.
Thanks. Yeah, we can, you're going to do a separate presentation on 707 cultivation, is that correct? Okay, so if there's no further, are there any further questions about the overview presentation we just heard?
Just back to the email, I was also copied to somebody else, I believe, that person.
Correct, so Ken Norton is the director of the Environmental Services or Protection Organization.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson, that was very helpful, and as the director suggested, why don't we take a roll call, now that we have everybody that I think we're going to have tonight?
Commissioner Scavdal.
Still here.
Commissioner Levy.
Here.
Commissioner Landry. Commissioner Mulder.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Physically present.
Commissioner West.
Okay, thank you. And now, Mr. Johnson, I would welcome a presentation on the first public hearing on 707 cultivation company.
Yes, thank you. Laura, can you get the share screen back up? Thanks. So this is for the, what's called the 707 cultivation company conditional use permit. It's a conditional use permit request for the continued cultivation of one acre of outdoor cannabis, and a special permit for the use and maintenance of a diversion and diversion infrastructure in the streamside management areas. This slide right here is just showing you the property in relation to both the Supply Creek watershed and the Hoopa Square, borders the Hoopa Square. Right here, you're seeing the cultivation areas that have been in existence before 2016. There are eight cultivation areas that are represented here. In, the green ones were proposed in this application to stay, the red areas are proposed to be retired and remediated. The estimated annual irrigation for this application is 700,000 gallons. The source of water identified in the application materials are a permitted groundwater well and a diversion. and a diversion. The groundwater well has some very questionable productivity. A CDFW site visit identified that it did not appear to be producing very well, and that site visit resulted in notice of violation for unpermitted stream diversions. The existing water storage was found by CDFW to be in disrepair and not very functional. And there is a state water right for 293,267 gallons, which is far short of the 700,000 gallons that would be needed to irrigate the one acre of cannabis. Particularly noteworthy is that the LSAA application that has been made to CDFW to resolve some of the violations and water crossings does not include a request for the diversions. And so one of the things that we looked at is whether there would be the ability to develop additional water sources on the site, particularly rainwater catchment. We believe, given the steep topography and the fact that most of this property is heavily timbered, that's unlikely to be able to be constructed in a manner that would meet the code requirements. And because of that, we are recommending that the planning commission find that there's no evidence of sufficient water to support the cannabis application, find the project exempt from environmental review, and deny the conditional use permit and the special permit. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Mitchell.
I was just wondering if you could expand in more detail the comment that the water storage was in disrepair. Can you, can you help me separate between not functioning whatsoever for its intended purpose, or it's rusty and maybe only holds 80% of the capacity?
Yes, absolutely. So there is approximately 123,000 gallons of water storage, which was a collection of water tanks and, I believe, two large bladders. And the bladders were identified by CDFW to have holes in them and not capable of holding water, so it was primarily the bladders that were not functional.
So you're able to estimate the functional storage capacity?
I believe it was about 25,000 gallons, perhaps.
Thank you.
Before we go to public comment, any other questions for Mr. Johnson on the report? Not at this time? Okay, then I will invite the public who may wish to comment on this, including and especially the applicant or the applicant's agent. If they're here, you can go first.
As their agent.
As the applicant's representative, you can now have on your mic.
Oh, my mic too. Okay, sorry about that.
And just.
Both mics should be on now. You can have some additional time, up to 10 minutes, if you wish, to make a presentation on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, I don't need it, but good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name's Heather Burke. I am an attorney here, and I represent the applicant, 707 cultivation company. 707 cultivation company, they came into this after some of the water-related facts that were mentioned in Cliff's report. I believe the permit transfer was signed in about June of 2021. In any event, the, we've reviewed the staff report, we've reviewed the evidence, and the applicant just wanted to come today and speak and say, we accept the findings, we accept the report, and the project is simply infeasible, both economically, but also just from a pure physical land use perspective, it's just not feasible, it's likely even impossible. So we just want to thank staff for their time, and we want to thank the commission for their time as well, and note that should the planning commission deny the application, that the applicant would accept that.
Thank you so much for that. I think, I think Commissioner, Commissioner Mitchell may have a question for you?
Sure.
So if we were able to make the findings that this, we could approve this project with additional conditions such as rainwater catchment, equipment and facilities to be able to fully make up the deficit, are you saying that it would still be infeasible and you don't want us to try to craft something that would work?
Essentially, it's impossible. And that is coming from, I think, not only what we saw in the evidence and the staff report, but also from professional project management. It's simply infeasible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I do appreciate you coming before us just to acknowledge that and that you're not contesting this recommendation. Is there anyone else who had a question for Ms. Burke before I let her go? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, sure. Commissioner Mitchell, you have a question for staff at this time, but I still want to continue with other public comment.
Is there a distinction or any important bearing whether we were to deny it or whether they, it sounds like they're willing to withdraw it?
I'll take that. So we did reach out to the applicant when we decided that this was probably the approach we would take, and they had indicated some desire to potentially do that, but they weren't quite ready to make that decision. And our intention was to try to bring all of these Supply Creek projects forward at the same time, we unfortunately had to continue a few, but, so we went ahead and moved forward with it.
So just to get back to what I was trying to get at, is if they today say, we know it won't work, we withdraw, would that make any difference in terms of their ability if, as time passes and markets fluctuate and prices change, that they could bring it back? Or is denying the same as withdrawing?
It, it has the same technical result.
Okay. Yeah, good question. Mr. Mulder, do you?
Have we closed public comment?
We have not. I just, I allowed Commissioner Mitchell to ask a question. But I do want to see if there's anyone else in the audience or on Zoom who wishes to comment on 707 cultivation company. I'm not seeing any hands up in the room or on Zoom or phone, so we will now close public comment and bring it back to the commission for further discussion.
It's, there isn't really much discussion with the staff report and then the testimony we received.
Yeah.
I mean, someone like Commissioner Mitchell make the motion that he wants to make.
Yeah, I just want to say it's always, in this situation, it's really nice when everyone's on the same page. And unfortunately, because of your discoveries about the feasibility and the information contained in the staff report, I would move that we deny the project based on all the findings and specifics in the staff report.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to deny made by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by Commissioner O'Neill. Any further discussion before we vote?
Yeah, just, just a couple of questions or a comment. I just, you know, I'm trying to understand the water supply issue. I understand the water supply issue, but could there be a case where we would actually sometimes approve a project but condition the project that it would have to have a certain amount of storage, it would not be able to use a stream diversion? It would seem to me it would be up to the developer to figure out how to get water into the storage tanks, as long as we said you had to have a certain amount of storage and had to come from rainwater catchment or offstream sources or a new well or whatever they were going to have to do.
And you can't cut down any trees to do it.
Absolutely. You have all the conditions. Ultimately, it's the same thing. I think they've come to the same conclusion. It's ultimately a denial, a permit that you cannot functionally construct or operate, so.
Sure.
I'm in support. I just want to understand, is it, is it our job to make sure that a, that a project actually has water, or is it our job to, to condition the project in such a way that it doesn't have any impact on the environment?
That's a good question. Director Ford, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I'll take a shot at it. I think it's both and. One, there has to be a source of water that's adequate to supply the need. And, and then secondly, there has to be the ability to store the water, and both of those seem compromised due to space right now, largely because of timberlands.
Well, then, if there's no further discussion, we do have a motion to deny, and I'll take a roll call vote on that. Okay, fine. No, I'm persuaded to just do a voice vote on this. So a voice vote, all those in favor of denying the 707 cultivation project, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And now, that brings us to second item, second public hearing, the Kush Creek Organics LLC conditional use permit and special permit. Mr. Johnson, will you be, oh, Mr. Santos is going to be presenting on that one? Okay. I would go ahead then and invite a staff presentation on Kush Creek Organics.
Chair Levy, members of the commission, good evening. Stephen Santos filling in for a staff member who couldn't be here tonight, presenting the Kush Creek Organics LLC conditional use permit. Just waiting for my screen to be shared. There we go. All right. The project is located in the Supply Creek watershed, as is all the projects this evening. Here's another map showing its proximity to the Hoopa Square. The project is for a conditional use permit for 7,340 square feet of existing mixed light and just shy of 15,000 square feet of existing outdoor cultivation. Water is sourced from a spring and a proposed 300,000 gallon rainwater catchment pond. The estimated annual water usage for this project is 46,650 gallons per year, which is about 1.9 gallons per square foot. And I'm highlighting this just because this is somewhat low in what we typically see in the averages. But in reviewing the operations plan and the staff report, it looks like this operator plants their crop in trenches, which has certain water conservation benefits, requiring them to only use drip irrigation a few times a week, and most of the water usage is in one month of the growing season. So it's pretty amazing to see that, that number. Currently, there's only 7,500 gallons of water storage on site, but an additional 87,000 gallons is proposed, which would bring the total to over 94,000 gallons, which would be more than twice of the annual water needs. So there'll be plenty of storage to get through a season. Processing will occur offsite at a licensed processing facility, and the project is conditioned to transition to renewable energy by January 1st, 2026. This project also includes a special permit for development within the streamside management area for the point of diversion and the diversion's infrastructure. And here, sorry for the resolution, but the screen capture sometimes doesn't carry over very well, but this is a excerpt from their site plan showing that the cultivation happens in two primary areas, and then the proposed pond is over there in sort of the lower left, kind of creating a triangle. Staff is recommending the commission find the project is consistent with the MND, make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit, and adopt the resolution approving the Kush Creek Organics LLC special permits and subject to the conditions of approval.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Santos before we go to public comment on this item? Commissioner Mulder?
I would like to re, sir, I have a couple of questions, but I'd like to hear the applicant's presentation, I think, and then circle back to staff after that.
Sure. Commissioner O'Neill?
Did you have communication from the Hoopa Tribe on this one?
Through the chair, we, no specific communication on this particular one. The communication was from earlier on in the review process where we basically got communication about all of these. So nothing specific on this, this project.
I just had a quick question for Mr. Santos. I, I may have, I may have missed a detail in what you said or on the screen, but I, the total water demand you said for this project, given its very, very low water usage, is 46,000 or so gallons?
Correct.
But is it, did you state that their intention, the applicant's intention, is to put in a 300,000 gallon rainwater catchment pond?
That is correct.
Even though that's many times what is required for irrigation?
It is, but the depth capacity of a pond doesn't necessarily directly correlate to the surface area that is available to, to capture the rain. And so that's why you see that difference. And according to the operations plan, once that pond is installed, it is the operator's intent, as I understand it, to transition all the irrigation to exclusively rainwater catchment.
Got it. Okay. Great. I mean, yeah, it's, I've, I've never seen quite that low water usage, but I understand that they're using particularly water-efficient techniques, so that is to be commended. If there's no questions at this time, other questions, then let's see if there's public comment, if the applicant, first of all, or the applicant's agent is here or on Zoom and wishes to comment, please let me know. You can go first. Is there anyone in the room or on Zoom, the applicant or otherwise, who wishes to comment on behalf of this project or about this project? Okay, not seeing any hands up, then I will close public comment. Bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Mulder?
So through the chair to staff, the, this, they have that number 1.9 highlighted. Question, staff goes out on an inspection, and let's say those numbers don't jive, even, let's say 46,000, let's say 50% more, if there's evidence of using 60,000 gallons of water or 70,000 gallons of water, what, what happens there?
Well, first off, I want to assure the commission through the chair that all the projects contain conditions of approval requiring water meters and things like that, so we have data to inspect. And if upon an inspection it was discovered that water usage was, was more, it would start a conversation with the applicant to understand what we're looking at and why we're seeing that increase. If that increase was related to irrigation needs for the project, then there would be essentially two options. One is they could implement measures to lower their water use to become compliant with what was approved. The other is they could submit a request to the Department for Processing to modify the permit because they have data and more information to understand what their needs are.
I'd just like to add that we have run into that exact situation, and, and really it's a matter of trying to work with the applicant gently to not result in a loss of a crop, but also not to continue to use water above what they said they were going to use. So we do take that number seriously. That will be a required component of the inspection, particularly in this area.
Okay. I just want to highlight that number, the only other project I've seen close to that number was a dry farm in the Holmes Flat area. So if that's what's in operations plan, that's what we're going to approve, I can support that. I just wanted to make sure those questions are on record.
Commissioner Mulder? I mean, sorry, Commissioner Mitchell?
I would like to follow up on the response to your question that you gave regarding the chasm between the surface area and the volume of the pond. I understand why you'd want more surface area if you're collecting rainwater, but is it the most minimally impactful to just have a larger storage capacity rather than collecting rainwater in a different way, like off of structures or? Do we really have to have that much storage capacity if, in fact, they don't use nearly that much water? And I get that perhaps. And I get that perhaps there's going to be, with larger surface area, there's going to be more evaporation and other things, but can you help me understand why it's appropriate? The volume, not the surface area?
Understood. So I have, in my experience, have yet to see a situation in which we've instructed an applicant in a particular manner for rainwater catchment based on, because it's kind of, it's an economic decision for them in terms of how, how they approach that. My understanding of this project proposal is that the pond proposed is for the catchment purposes rather than off of roofs, because again, I'm filling in for a colleague. I'm not totally familiar with all of the possible structures, but sometimes it's not easy to collect rain off of hoop houses and things like that. And a pond is your best type of collection mechanism. So, other than that, I can only speculate, you know, you know, why they're choosing a pond rather than to install some other type of collection infrastructure, but for this project, it appears this is the, the best choice for the applicant.
I guess just to respond to that, I understand that they're an economic decision potentially, but if there's a higher risk of providing habitat for invasive species or a failure to cause more, you know, potential impacts from a failure of that, you know, I just wonder if we need to consider decreasing the volume. And if they need that much surface area, would it just need to be shallower? Or I just don't understand why they need that much volume in a three dimensional sense.
Perhaps it would help to describe sort of the mechanic that we look at when we look at rainwater catchment analysis. There's, there's three variables in the, in the equation. Two dimensional surface area, not three dimensional holding capacity, two dimensional surface area, the actual rainfall, and then a conversion factor to bring it into a common denominator. So you could say you need a pond the shape of, of this piece of paper to hit your, your collection target, but you may choose to keep, to dig a deeper pond to mitigate some of the issues you described, like evaporation.
So if I could maybe add a little bit to that, you'll notice, and maybe this is your concern, that there is a bullfrog management plan that's required. So some of the concerns associated with the pond are addressed in, in both the LLC A and the conditions relative to species of concern associated with the pond. I think the other thing is it's a typically small surface area with the pond. So I don't know, I was just looking for the engineering analysis to show how much rainfall would be required to fill it. It may not be something that refills every single year. So it, it kind of will maybe have 300,000 gallons, but it may take a couple of years of good rainfall to fill. And then it may not completely refill when it's, there's a little bit less rainfall. And so it provides some ability to buffer there, and so that there's a constant and assured supply of water. If there's a particular concern with, you know, a deeper pond, we can struggle to address that. But normally having a little bit of extra water, particularly for firefighting purposes and for other purposes, is typically viewed as being a very good thing.
Commissioner Mulder? Did you want to respond?
Sure. So I want to say usually we're, we're struggling to get enough water storage, and I don't remember ever having this issue, but is there anything in the relevant code or other guidance, including CEQA, that would, we would need to consider for having too much water sitting in one place? That goes above and beyond what is necessary for the project to succeed. Because my understanding is that we're supposed to design a project or condition a project such that is the least impactful.
Right.
And I would think that the larger the volume of an artificial holding tank for water, the more potential issues there are going to be. I'm not saying there couldn't be some for fire suppression and some for a drought year. It just seems like a very excessive.
Well, I, I think the concern, if, if I could try to help alleviate that somehow, is to look at the size of the property, the relative size, the surface, relative small surface area of the pond in relation to the property. So this will collect water basically from the top of the pond down into it. That's it. This is not a pond that's designed, well, it may have some hillside runoff into it on one end. But, you know, overall, we're not depriving the watershed of having water with this pond. I mean, where you would run into a problem with a pond that's too big is if you were to create a lake and deprive a watershed of water. This is a very small percentage of water that's being collected in relationship to the size of the property.
Commissioner Mulder?
So for me, I, I trust what the applicant's saying because that's what we do. And then I was kind of just thumbing through the same watershed, so it's the same microclimate and kind of looking at their annual water usage. And I don't see that this would be a bad thing to have this big of a pond in the event that there's more water needed, for one. For two, the fires, like fire suppression. And then three, I'm sitting there thinking, I just saw on Instagram these ponds being put in that we approved probably within the last year, that the water is actually being stored and then put back into Redwood Creek. So I think there's sufficient evidence to have water stored in ponds and then have it available to put back into watersheds if needed, especially if it's rain catchment. So I think, I feel, I don't think, I feel that we have enough evidence to move forward and approve the project as is. And I, I believe that there's been plenty of concern from the commissioners about the water use. And they all have to use meters. I guarantee that this area is going to be very well watched. I mean, they had to do their own cumulative impact report. There was three studies for this watershed, so I don't think water use is going to be taken lightly in this area. And with that, I would make a motion to approve this project with the recommended conditions of approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mulder, seconded by Commissioner Scavdall. Further discussion on this motion before we vote. Sure?
Yeah, question for the motion maker. Do you feel that the the restrictions and requirements and all of that requires them to put any excess above the things that you described as being necessary back into either the groundwater or the watershed?
Being that this is a 160 acre partial and the surface area that they're utilizing to collect the rainwater, I feel that we are not depriving any habitat, so I'm, I'm confident that. Or maybe, maybe I'm mishearing your question?
So you, you had mentioned that in the event there'd be extra water in another situation, that it can be returned to the watershed. Is, is that what I heard you say as a reason behind why you weren't concerned?
I'm not concerned if there was, for some reason, years and years of extra water, it could be returned to the watershed. And then also it's going to, if they aren't using the water, there's going to be, there's a spillway. It's going to make its way back to the watershed.
So you're saying if it goes over the capacity, it would flow over, as opposed to we have more than we think we'll need next few years and we're going to?
It would give the applicant that, the ability like to do that as well. I would think that you might have to sign some, I don't know if you'd have to do something with DFW to release pond water during certain times, but it would provide the ability.
Okay. Thank you.
I would also add, the pond is designed, it, it does show it as either unlined or lined.
Yeah.
I suspect the applicant's going to try to see if they could get the storage with unlined pond before they put it, invest in a pond liner. So they're going to have some percolation out of this pond in the groundwater as well as evaporation. It's about 10 feet deep, it looks like.
And in fact, studies that I'm familiar with have shown that having leaky ponds, unlined ponds that capture wet season water and then slowly do percolate into the ground can actually be really helpful at recharging springs and surface waters in the area. So I, anyway, glad to have the discussion, but if, if there's no other discussion on this, then we do have a motion on the table. Everyone ready for a vote? Okay. Actually, if I can just ask one quick question I didn't get a chance to ask. It just has to do with timing. Is, for the upcoming cultivation season, is it conditioned that the pond storage must be in place prior to cultivation in 2024? Or will they be allowed to use the former point of diversion for the upcoming cultivation season?
One moment while I review the conditions.
Thanks. Sorry, there were, there were just a lot of these, and so I Yeah. Well, I just remembered that this one had some concern about the former diversion. And I just thought it would be good to have that clear in our discussion, which, which way it will be in terms of water source for the upcoming year.
Upon review of the conditions of approval, there is not a condition of approval requiring a certain amount of storage be in place before initiating the 2024 cultivation season. So that may be something the commission may want to consider.
Commissioner Mulder?
The way I read it is they currently have more than 100% existing water storage in accordance with their estimated annual water usage.
It, it, it is true. I, I don't want to make a problem where one doesn't exist. I just, I understood that this one had been reliant on a point of diversion in the past and which is hydrologically connected, but that doesn't, but, but they, I believe, had the legal right to divert in, you know, in April. I just wanted to be clear which
If it would help the chair, perhaps we could substitute condition 19, which for some reason refers to a groundwater well, to require that the, the pond be completed, maybe not before the next, the next cultivation season because that would be unlikely at this point.
Right.
But perhaps at some point in the future, either '25 or, or '26.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Mulder?
I'm not so concerned about that. If we strengthen up condition number nine, the applicant shall install a water monitoring device on each source, well and surface diversion if, when utilized, and storage tanks as applicable to water used for cannabis irrigation separate from any domestic use. Maybe add in some language, these meters shall be installed before the commencement of the cultivation season of 2024? Just so that way, there's, the concern, their current concern was the diversions. So if there's meters, it's going to show, hey, you're either using what you're supposed to or you're not.
Can you reread the description of the meters must go on the following?
Oh, I was, I was adding that in. I was, I was just throwing out a hypothetical with the I was, I was looking at amending my motion to include in condition of approval number nine, that water meters shall be installed before the beginning or commencement of the 2024 cultivation season.
But installed on, I, I thought you said tanks.
The applicant shall install, this is what it reads right now, the applicant shall install a water monitoring device on each source, well and surface diversion if, when utilized, and storage tanks as applicable to monitor water use for cannabis irrigation separate from any domestic use. That's what it says right now.
I guess my question is, does a rainwater catchment pond fall into that definition? So.
It would be a source.
The rainwater catchment pond would need to be metered.
Yeah.
But I, I think the debate right now, if I could step into that, is whether or not to condition the rainwater catchment pond or condition when the water metering devices get installed. And I'm going to throw a, a curve at you and say, or both. And if you wanted to modify condition number nine, you could simply add prior to what's there right now, prior to any cult, any cultivation in 2024. And then the rest of the condition could remain just as it is.
That the water meters would be installed?
Correct.
Yes.
So I'll amend my motion to use that language for condition of approval number nine. And then with that condition, I'm not as concerned of, of requiring the pond be done by a certain date because the meters are going to show the diversion.
Yes, and I, again, I, I apologize, but I'm, you know, looking at this now, I, I see that they have more than sufficient, you know, tank and bladder storage. At, at this time, for their projected water needs, it does appear to be a legal water right. They're, just because they are intending to switch to water catchment, I don't think we need to require that they have the pond in place by next year. That doesn't seem feasible. So, didn't mean to complicate matters. With all that said, we have a, a motion amended by the motion maker. Yes, Commissioner Scavdall, did you wish to? Okay.
If I support this project, I just wanted to, to explain. Excuse me, I just want to explain that, first of all, I appreciate the applicants in the watershed collaborated and came together to conduct a full watershed study. I, I think that was, I, I really commend that. And it's my understanding that they did consult with the Hoopa tribe on those studies. The tribe conducted their own study that came to the same conclusions. And I just want to summarize that conclusion, which is the projected demand was estimated based on maximum of typical demands reported by cultivators, even though we have some cultivators that are using clearly water conservation methods. So it represents a considerably high estimate of the demand in the watershed. They use the hydraulic years modeled, included the driest year on record. They account for infiltration, depression, stories, evaporation, and the demand, so the, the total usage and projected in this area represents 0.4% to 1.8% of the total runoff of the study area. They, the analysis was based on runoff from only 80% of the watershed. It excluded snow melt, doesn't account for cultivators use utilizing groundwater disconnected from surf water, surface water or rainwater catchment. All of which would add to that total supply, runoff supply to Supply Creek and reduce cultivation impact. So the conclusion of these studies was that the 9.2 acres of proposed cultivation in the entire Supply Creek watershed would not have a significant impact on surface water runoff within the Supply Creek watershed. And it's my understanding that the tribe conducted an independent study that came to the same conclusion or supported this conclusion. And I just wanted to clarify, that's why I can support this project.
Great, thank you.
He was the second, or do you support that amendment on second?
And I do support the amendment.
Thank you. We have a, an amended motion supported by the second of that motion. We ready to vote now? Okay. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. I'll oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Okay, so we had Commissioner Mulder, sorry, I'm Commissioner Mitchell and Commissioner O'Neil voting against. And the other three voted in favor. This is, the pass is three to two. Okay. Shall we take a brief break now, or do you guys want to go one more project? We have six more to get through.
My back was killing me before I got here, so.
Oh, okay, we'll do, we'll take a 10 minute break right now. Let's be back in session no later than 7:24. Okay. Are we back in session, recording again? Okay, thank you. All right. Is this my agenda? That is my agenda. Okay, so that brings us to the third item under public hearings. No, that's, that's yours. Yeah, 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 sorry. Sorry, I pulled it. Which is Aloha Top Shelf conditional use permits. And I would invite a staff report on this project, please.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Thank you for being here tonight. So before us tonight is a conditional use permit for 35,000 square feet of outdoor cannabis with a 3,450 square foot ancillary propagation greenhouse. I'm going to just jump into the presentation here and, and take it from there. So, let's see. Oh, yeah, okay, so this is the general location map showing, you know, Will Creek, Berry Summit, and the location of the project. How do we advance here? Hit the arrow key. Okay, sure. This is the parcel. It's a 212-acre parcel situated on a ridge. The red line is the watershed delineation. So we've got Supply Creek there to the east of the property, and then I'm forgetting the name of the watershed to the west. I can't read it. Still can't read it. Mill Creek? I don't know. Anyway, it's not Supply Creek. So the, the parcel straddles the watershed boundary. So project summary, 35,000 square feet of outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation. The applicant estimates the annual water usage at 190,000 gallons. The property has two permitted wells used to supply the cultivation operation. They have 17,000 gallons right now, and they have been the recipient of the Streamside Protection Grant Program, so they'll be adding 78,000 gallons of storage for the '24 cultivation season. They propose to dry the cannabis on site and process that offsite with a licensed processing, I don't know what you call it, licensed processing operation. I looked at the wells, and they are both high-producing wells. When I get to the site plan, there's the ancillary propagation cultivation area has a well and a solar system to power that well. The cultivation area has the same. The cultivation area has an initial tested yield of 60 gallons per minute. And the, the well itself sits. For the main cultivation area, sits 710 feet above the surface. The bottom of the well is 710 feet above the surface of Supply Creek and is approximately 2,500 feet away from the creek itself. So that would be the main source of water for the cultivation. The other well, the south well, is, was tested at 20 gallons per minute, and it is 640 feet above the nearest perennial water course, which is Supply Creek. And that well is 3,200 feet to the east of, or wait, no, sorry, Supply Creek is 3,200 feet to the east of that well. This is the site plan overview. It's a little hard to see, I apologize. If I had a pointer, I would, there's the north boxed-in area is the large cultivation site where the flowering cultivation will occur. The smaller boxed-in site is where the ancillary propagation nursery greenhouse will occur. This is just a little zoomed-in detail of the proposed projects. We've got Site Area 1 has the cultivation flowering greenhouses and a drying facility, as well as water storage tanks, parking, and a couple of shipping containers for drying and, and storage. The Site 2, again, has the well, the lower yielding well, storage, and solar panels to support the nursery operation. So the recommendation is that the Planning Commission find the project consistent with the mitigated negative declaration adopted for the CMMLO per Section 15162C of SEQA guidelines, and the commission should make all required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and special permit, and adopt the resolution approving the Aloha Top Shelf LLC conditional use permit, subject to the conditions of approval. And with that, I'd like to open to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. It is Mr. Whitney?
Yes, I forgot to enter.
No worries. Thanks for your presentation. Any questions for Mr. Whitney?
I do.
Before we go to public comment, yes, Commissioner O'Neill?
Do you have any evidence of any communication that you had with the Hoopa tribe recent on your recommendations, or to or from?
There, there has not been any recent communications vis a vis this specific project. However, the project was referred to the Hoopa tribe and the Northwest Information Center. The applicant did conduct archeological resource study.
Yeah, I saw that. I'm, I'm more in regards to the water supply. Do, do you communicate with the Hoopa PUD, who is responsible for their water supply? Or just the environmental department?
So we have communicated with both the tribal council and the Environmental Protection Office.
In regards to this application and your recommendations on this application?
In regards to this application, the recommendations and all of the other ones in Supply Creek, yeah. On a, on a more general level, we listed the applications that we were working on and sent requests for, for comment. We did actually meet with the tribal council a few years ago to identify what we would be doing, the studies that we would be doing, and that we would be making sure to contact them and give them every opportunity to comment before we brought these forward. That was a commitment that we made, and we did follow. And so, again, with all the Supply Creek ones, we did send letters to the tribal chair last year requesting a meeting with the tribal council. We did not hear back from anybody other than the EPA, the, the environmental office with Hoopa, but we did try multiple times to reach the tribal chair.
I think it would have been advantageous to include that in here, so that, because they are a federally recognized tribe, this is one of their two main water supplies, and, you know, to show that evidence of communication and the time of, and date of that communication, to show that it's recent in regards to this hearing.
Commissioner Mulder?
Do the chair to staff, can you refresh my memory? We had a presentation a little bit earlier, and if I was correct, I just want to make sure I'm still remembering the way that presentation happened. It was half an hour or so ago. Well, the, what I remembered hearing in that is there was an independent study done by the applicants together with the cumulative impacts, and the tribe was made aware of that. And then, from my understanding, the tribe also conducted their own independent environmental impact or cumulative effect, and their findings were very similar or almost exactly the same as the independent?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you for that.
Commissioner Mitchell?
So I know we've added a condition for verifying this in the past, but when we condition a project that the processing of the almost finished product is done offsite at a licensed facility, how are we able to, during our annual inspection, verify that if, if we're not going there and happen to be there right during that season?
Sure, through, through the chair. So when we go out to do inspections, we do inquire, for those projects that have offsite processing, we do inquire who they are processing with, and if it is, if the inspection's being done at a time where they would have those records, we would be asking for that. Typically, we're doing those inspections during the cultivation season, so they would have those records for the previous season.
Just, just to respond, I, I, like this project, I would ask that, in, in cases like this, that we just ask to be able to see the receipts at the, at the inspection. I think that's a simple way to just verify that, one, they did it offsite, and two, that the person they did it with is licensed.
Okay. Director Ford?
Thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. Could you help me understand what you just asked for?
I did. Instead of asking for verbal validation of offsite processing, I asked for them to provide the receipts for paying for or the agreement with them.
So as part of the records that we keep as part of our inspections, that's?
Exactly, and I, I used to be an internal auditor, so my mindset goes to, if we want to prevent something, we have to make sure that we can detect that it was done wrong or right, and I just feel that a verbal confirmation is insufficient.
Okay. I, I think I understand what you're saying, but I think one of the things we look at is the facility, and if there's not a facility there to do processing, then there's a fair, very high likelihood that they're processing offsite.
Well, there's, there's two parts of the requirement. That's to be processed offsite at a licensed facility. So having a receipt from a licensed facility would show that they did that.
Okay.
I mean, if everyone thinks that's a ridiculous idea, I'm, I'm happy to be in the minority, but I like everything else about this project, so I just had that as a small question of, could we do that? And we've done it in the past.
Commissioner Mulder?
Not to jump into the weeds, but I'm going to jump into the weeds. Under my understanding of, like, this process is someone can buck their product down, which is almost basically processing, buck it all the way down to individual buds, and sell it as bulk material. What, what's really the impact that we're trying to go after? I mean, if the product's tested, you have health and safety, it's tested for microbial, pathogens, pesticides, all that kind of, what's, what's the impact we're trying to really be concerned about? Because I'm not hearing it. All that I'm hearing is just kind of really trying to make things more difficult. That's all I'm hearing.
Okay, well, there's a balance between complying with the regulations and rules and just asking to see a piece of paper if they're, if they're using an offsite processing facility, or NA, because they're not processing it in the way that an offsite facility would. I think that's easy, easy to prove, but the reason is just not approve and then let, let B is we do an annual inspection, and there's a lot of things we can see, but things that are happening in a very small time window, we can't. Just like a water meter is a way for us to validate what they say in terms of their water usage.
But can I re, the, the impact, though? I'm, I'm looking at the impact. Water meter, that's a resource, like, that can be beneficial to a lot of people. If they buck the material down and sold it to an extractor, they aren't processing offsite. I sold all my material bulk to an extractor. So I, I'm, I'm trying to get what's the impact that we're, what's the land use impact that we're really trying to mitigate?
So my understanding is that processing facilities are required to meet certain requirements for the employees or whoever would be using it, and there's a, a potential incentive to say, yeah, I agree to process it offsite and not.
Okay, I, let's, I, I'm going to move this along, just because we do have a lot more to get to tonight. I, I haven't opened public comment yet. I would now invite comment from the public. If the applicant or the applicant's agent is here, I would invite them to come up first to make a presentation. Thank you very much. I believe you are the agent?
Yes, Suzanne with Margrove Advisors. Thank you for being here tonight, reviewing this project. I actually hadn't intended to make comments or a presentation, but I'm seeing that I kind of might have to. I thought that the project kind of spoke for itself. It does seem very permissible, approvable. There is a 2,400-square-foot processing facility proposed on this project. It is in the reports. The issue, I think, which maybe Commissioner Mulder was trying to get to, is not everyone processes. You can buck down, you could sell it as bulk, you can do, what's it called?
Fresh freeze.
Fresh, fresh frozen, exactly, where you are not trimming at all. So to put that condition in, in my opinion, would limit the ability of the farmer to do what's right for that cultivation season. So I think it would be very restrictive. I think you're suggesting maybe we, again, move the goalposts. So I would just caution against maybe that requirement, but my client is also here. He said, no problem, that he would agree to that. But as a agent with many projects having been approved and still a handful to go, I would just caution the commission, if it does need to be there, I would like specific language about what type of processing that they do. Because trimming is one type of processing, and fresh frozen is very different. They cut the plant, put it in freezers, and it leaves the property immediately in most cases. So that's a concern. This property basically runs on solar, solar operations, solar pump. He did receive the grant most recently for increasing his solar capabilities. He has two very high-producing wells on this property, and he has enough storage to meet the requirements that are recommended in the staff report. So I would hope that the commission would consider to approve this project as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. If I may just ask a quick follow-up.
Certainly.
The, the project runs entirely on solar?
Yes.
Okay, yes, because that's what I thought there was.
He currently has a small system, and he is now going to spend another $30,000 to increase that system.
Great, thanks. Thank you. Are there any other members of the audience or on Zoom or phone wishing to comment on the Aloha Top Shelf project? Okay. Then I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. If we did have a need to ask any follow-up questions, we can call up the agent again. But I'll bring it back to the commission now for further discussion. Commissioner Scavdahl, did you?
Yes. Question for staff. In reviewing the report from the tribe's consultant on cumulative impacts in the watershed, they seem more concerned, not so much about the annual water demand, but more about water quality as related to runoff from unmaintained roads and stream crossings. Can you, can you tell me, you know, I know we have a long list of conditions, and I was trying to read through there, but which conditions address those concerns that the applicant uses best management practices and limit sediment runoff from the site?
Absolutely. We can look and, and find the specific conditions. The general idea, though, was. is that both through requiring compliance with the site management plan that shows conformance with the state water board requirements for water quality and compliance with...
I think they're embedded in there.
And compliance, right, with the lake and stream bed alteration agreement from CDFW. Those should ensure that they're not only actively protecting water quality, but improving water quality through some of the improvements that they'll be required to do by CDFW.
Thank you.
If I could, through the chair, and maybe now's not the exact time, but I did want to take a moment to maybe just respond to some of the questions that Commissioner O'Neill had relative to correspondence with the tribe. Okay.
Thanks, go ahead.
Sure. So I'm gonna try to share my screen and just show two of the more recent correspondences that we had, keeping in mind that there were also emails that were sent. So in October of last year, we did send a letter to the tribal chair and the tribal council identifying the studies that had been done and our desire to meet with the tribe to discuss those studies and any further concerns that they had. We never received a response to this. We did follow-up by phone and email. And then the... Once we had received the study that the tribe had actually done independently, we had notified them in here in May that we were intending to move these projects forward. And we had identified that we might have them on a hearing in August. And again, we didn't receive a response from the tribal chair or the tribal attorney. This is... This letter is what generated the response from that environmental protection agency from the tribe. And again, as with this letter, we did follow-up by email and phone and did not receive response from the tribal chair. The project was also noticed to... A notice of this hearing was also sent to the tribe.
Thanks. Commissioner Mulder?
So, two things, just to follow up on Commissioner Scabdal's. I noticed condition of approval number four. Seems like within two years of the effective date, the permit of the permit the applicant shall implement the remediation plan prepared by North Point Consulting, attachment F to the staff report. Plan recommends addresses four areas of concern regarding erosion and water course impact. One concern has been addressed, the remediation plan shall be available to county staff as part of the annual conformance review. So I think it has our thing there. This question, I wanted to, just through the chair to staff, condition of approval number 11, it doesn't... I don't want to be biased towards one project or potentially biased towards one project or another. Would it be appropriate to add in there that the water meter should be installed on this one before the commencement of the 2024 season as well as we did on the other ones?
Absolutely. I think that'd be appropriate, yes.
Okay. Then I would make a motion to approve this project with amending condition of approval 11 to add that water meters shall be installed before the beginning of the 2024 cultivation season.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I would second it and ask for a friendly amendment that, based on what I've read in the project description, staff report, and conditions of approval, there's a requirement that processing be done onsite as... Offsite, excuse me. So long as they have not yet conducted the appropriate onsite wastewater treatment. And so the employees aren't permitted to use portable toilets. So to that end, I would like to add an additional condition that until such time or modify the condition about the offsite processing, to the extent that the applicant does choose to have their product processed, and then it goes on to say that it has to be done offsite, and then just include and provide receipts or other evidence to support compliance with this provision at the annual inspection.
Okay. The second is suggesting an amendment to the motion you made.
I'm gonna have to read through condition of approval number 12 again and try to... I think it kind of does that already, but maybe I'm wrong.
I'm gonna take a moment to look at that as well. Yes, Commissioner Mitchell?
So if we look at the staff report on page two, I believe?
Page two of the staff report?
I believe so. I just read it. Will staff point out where we can see the specific language of the condition? Because I found it in the staff report, but the condition would be easier to amend if we saw it.
You're noting that it says in the staff report trimming will be done offsite at a licensed processing facility. Is that what you're referring to?
Exactly.
That is the project description, yes. So, the... It says trimming will be done onsite. No, trimming's onsite.
Sorry, where...
Processing offsite.
Where does it say that?
If you go to the project description in the staff report, it identifies drying will occur within two 320-square-foot storage containers with a proposed 2,400-square-foot new building for drying. Trimming will occur offsite at a licensed processing facility.
Offsite?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So...
So I'm not trying to tell anyone how to grow or process or not process their product. I'm just saying, if we're gonna make a requirement that they do something offsite for an environmental health or other reason, I'd like that to be able to be confirmed during the annual inspection. That's the only tweak I need.
Commissioner Mulder?
So, question to staff. I hear you. Quick question to staff, though. If an applicant has a project description in their project, is that... That's the requirement of the project. Is that correct or incorrect?
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. That's kind of exactly where my mind was going, was to talk a little bit about what a project description does and then what conditions do. A project description is declarative of what the applicant intends to do. That is the permit. What conditions do is they modify... Typically, they modify the permit. Sometimes they confirm what's in the permit. In this particular case, if they choose to process or trim onsite, that would require a modification to the permit. They are required to have licenses for anything that they do onsite. And so in order to get a state license, they're gonna need a local approval to do that. They also need to be able to, once they take the material or the crop offsite, it has to go into a regulated chain. And that's regulated by the state all the way to the retail point of sales. And I know there's question about whether or not the state adequately regulates that or not, but that's really beyond our purview. We're regulating what happens on the property.
So thank you for that. Can you please re-clarify what your friendly amendment to the motion was?
I will. I would like to amend the motion because, and because even though it's part of the project description and doing something different would be an automatic violation, it's something that is... Could and does happen over such a short period of time. It's not like when we go out, we could see, oh, they've doubled the cultivation area, or they don't have the tanks, or this or that. Using trimming in an offsite facility can be done or not done in, depending on the total output and what you want to do with it, could be done relatively short order, not when we're there to inspect. So I would like to add a condition that provides evidence that they've met that part of the project description.
So, just throw it out, even though it's in the project description, I hear your concern. Until onsite processing facility is constructed and signed off for occupancy, receipts of offsite processing shall be available upon annual inspection. Does that sound good to you?
That sounds perfect.
Okay, if that's the friendly amendment, I'm gonna accept it and be ready to move to the...
Thank you, Commissioner Mulder. And so just so I'm clear, we are understanding that the possibility of onsite processing is in the works, is planned for future. I guess this would be a question for the agent, and I see you wanting to approach. So if you could come up and clarify, I don't think any of us want to stand in the way of you having the full range of options that you, your client, would, the applicant would like to pursue here. So...
So what... How will that play out if it's in the condition and it says for trimming and they don't trim, they fresh-frozen, when the inspector is there, Director Ford, do you think they're gonna know how to handle this? Through the chair? Sorry.
So that's the question. That you're just wondering how it would be handled if we add this condition and they choose not to trim, but to engage in some other processing of the product?
Yeah, and what burden that may put on the inspectors to understand what they're doing and what receipts they might have to present for.
Okay. Reasonable question. Thank you. I see a couple of... It was, a question for the director.
So the way we would interpret that is as long as it's going into a licensed part of the production chain, we would accept that as being adequate, whether it be fresh-frozen, trimming, processing, whatever it is.
So in order to avoid the do we trim or not to trim question, could we just say evidence shall be available upon request showing that it was, you know, either/or? So basically what you said, how you described it, you'd want evidence that they'd gone into the downstream part of the chain legally and appropriately?
Been transferred to a licensed processing, fresh-frozen distributor, whatever it is.
Could we just request evidence of that and make it more general and meet her concerns and mine?
Can I ask a question?
That... So if we're talking about the amendment, let's get that hand... Like, that language until a licensed facility or evidence of transfer to a licensed manufacturer or distributor. Are you good with that?
I think if that includes how he described, is it a processor or a fresh-frozen facility?
That's... I was using the term manufacturer because that's the... A manufacturer is what's processing that fresh-frozen, their licensed manufacturer.
That works. That works. Thank you for clarifying.
Is there something about this particular permit that would make it different than all the other ones that we've permitted that said they were doing it offsite? Because we should be consistent. If we're gonna ask this person to do it, then we should have been asking everybody else unless there's something specific about this one, like maybe to the roads where people are coming and going, or, you know, something that's more specific that's requiring this additional requirement that we've never required before.
I would like to, through the chair, I'm sorry. We haven't done this before.
Yeah.
And we're kind of trying to approve a negative here. I don't know how else to describe it. Because that activity that we're conditioning that they not do is not permitted as part of this permit. So we're saying that they can't do something they already can't do. And we're asking for them to give us proof that they're not doing what they said they weren't gonna do.
May I respond?
Certainly.
So with all due respect to Director Ford, I would say that this is not a case of we treat one person one way and one another. I've asked for this same amendment and it's passed every time I've asked for it in the past. And in this case, where we talk about the need to develop specifically, you know, wastewater treatment facility before having onsite folks.
Let's separate out... The wastewater treatment facility has nothing to do with this discussion.
Okay. Well, that's not what the staff report has them both in the same topic. So that's why I'm bringing it together. But as far as proving a negative, we can't ask for proof that you didn't trim onsite. But we can ask for proof of compliance of the requirement to, if you're gonna trim it or process it, that you do it in an offsite facility. That's not proving a negative. It's proving they complied with that.
But the thing that I'm trying to say is they're just not permitted to process onsite. So of course, they're gonna go offsite with it because they're not approved to do it onsite.
And I don't mean to be sarcastic, but I'm seriously saying, this is commercial cannabis. And just because we ask or say you can or can't do that, the reason we have a process of an annual inspection is to ensure the compliance. Of course, we could just say, here's the...
But to ensure compliance with what happens onsite. Okay.
Commissioner Mulder?
So, thank you, Commissioner O'Neill, for bringing that up about being different towards a project, one project or another. I really appreciate that. I was honestly being amenable just to move this along and try to get to the next, I don't know, one, two, three, four, five. So with that being said, I withdraw my original motion, and I make a new motion to, like I originally said, approve the project as recommended by staff with the minor amendment to condition of approval number 11, that a water meter shall be installed before the cultivation season of 2024 begins.
Paul second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Or can we move ahead by this? Okay. I would call for a roll call vote on this item, please. Laura? Ken?
Commissioner Scabdal?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Landry? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
No.
Commissioner Mitchell?
No.
Motion passes three to two. Okay. I would really like for us to get through the remaining items, and there are five more. So without further ado, I would invite a staff report on Stay Humboldt LLC conditional use permit.
Okay. Hello again, commissioners and chair. Tonight, I'll be presenting the Stay Humboldt LLC proposal. This is a conditional use permit for... LLC proposal. This is a conditional use permit for 42,000 square feet of existing outdoor cultivation of cannabis. His ancillary propagation will occur in existing greenhouses. The estimated annual water usage for the project is 42,000 gallons. The, this is the general site location. Again, we're in the Supply Creek watershed, perched up fairly high elevation. I think it's close to 4,000 feet, 3,500 feet. This is a representation of the parcel location within the watershed. The red lines are the watershed delineations. So this Stay Humboldt proposal is almost straddling the line between two watersheds, one of which is Supply Creek to the east, and my poor vision is not being able to tell me.
Minor.
That's it. Thank you, Cliff. Is the one to the west. So kind of went over some of this already. Forty-two thousand square feet of outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation. He is cultivating inside greenhouses. He, the project has 20,000 gallons of existing water storage, and he is proposing a million gallon pond, that is a rainwater catchment pond, to provide water for the cultivation project. The project is in an area with historic logging activities permitted through a timber harvest plan, and the project proposes consolidating cultivation areas that were somewhat scattered around the property into one area. Cannabis will be dried and trimmed onsite. The proposal includes the development of a commercial standard facility with an ADA restroom and parking to serve employees for, that will be conducting the trimming or processing for the project. The applicant did provide a well evaluation report for their well, and the geologist concluded that there was low potential for significant hydrologic connectivity between surface water and the groundwater well. They propose a maximum of 13 employees, and power is currently provided by a properly shielded generator, although transition to solar is proposed and will be completed per the conditions of approval by 2026. This is going to be hard to read, but we're looking at the site plan. Bottom left-hand corner is where the cultivation is concentrated. You can see some of the existing cultivation areas that will be combined with the, with the cultivation site in the bottom left, and you can also see the location of the proposed pond towards the southern, south-central portion of the property. This property is 160 acres of timber production zone. And this is a little zoom in on the southern portion of the property where the bulk of the cultivation activity will, well, all the cultivation activity will be focused going forward, showing the proposed commercial building, storage tanks, and greenhouses. My recommendation, or staff's recommendation tonight, is to find the project consistent with mitigated negative declaration for the CMM L U O per section 1516 to C of sequel guidelines. Make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and, oop, error, I'm sorry, there is no special permit here, and adopt the resolution approving Stay Humboldt LLC for the conditional use permit. Thank you. Please let me know if you got questions.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Before we go to public comment, is there other questions for Mr. Whitney? Yes, Commissioner Mulder.
Just point to clarification. You said no special permit, but there is an LSAA, so isn't there technically, wouldn't there be a special permit for work within a stream site management area? I just want to make sure we're clear for the record.
Yeah, the applicant received a letter from Fish and Game, Fish and Wildlife stating that there was no LSAA needed for this, for the work they were doing, which was essentially kind of de minimis work on a, I believe, a couple culverts, but I'd have to maybe dig into that to figure that out.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to clarify through the chair. So the, under the county code, replacement and work in stream areas, especially for culverts, done under an LSAA does not trigger the need for a special permit. Diversionary water does trigger the need for a special permit. So that's why you're seeing some require that, some don't, even though they may still have an LSAA.
I just learned something new. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other questions at this time, I would ask if there's anyone in the public who wishes to comment, beginning with the applicant or their agent. Yes, sir. Are you the agent for this project?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Please go ahead. You can have up to 10 minutes if you wish.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Lou. I'm the agent for the applicant. I want to note a few things. The, an LSAA was issued on, it was an op law letter, so, you know, there was no formal, you know, based on the seminal window, they had to approve it because they did not mobilize the staff or respond in sufficient time. We have reached back out to CDFW in the interim and provided a completion report. The op law letter states that the project should proceed and that the project should be completed as recommended by the professional that prepared the documents. And so the culverts were sized by Timberland Resource Consultants, and the in-stream work was done pursuant to the issued LSAA. So the work is, you know, to address some of the concerns that were brought up specifically during the comment about the overall watershed as a whole, you know, to relieve the sedimentation issues, the work, you know, work has already been completed to help mitigate those issues on this particular application. There were some concerns noted earlier about sizing of ponds. I wanted to note that, you know, this particular applicant is proposing to use about half the capacity of the pond as designed. Ponds are generally a little bit oversized just to account for drought years based on the footprint. And so it's not atypical in a, in a severe drought year to receive half the rainfall. And so the pond square footage has to be designed to account for that. In this particular site, the, the goal was to concentrate all the cannabis-related infrastructure into one discrete area to greatly minimize the, the need to, you know, have fuel to move vehicles and service these discrete areas. So just by simply consolidating all the cultivation areas to one site is, is going to greatly reduce, you know, road traffic, erosion, and fuel usage, as well as labor requirements to manage the property. The, the other issue specific to this portion of Humboldt County is that a lot of the, the water being captured by these systems is in the form of snow. This is very high in elevation, and I think he, the applicant had mentioned that in the, you know, the worst drought year, there was still three feet of snow. And, you know, translation is somewhere between one to 10, for one inch of rain is equivalent to around 10 or more inches of snow, depending on the density. And so to, to fully be able to capture the available water to actually store it, I, I believe that this pond seems reasonably sized for this specific project. As part of the conditions through CDFW, there's a requirement for bullfrog management plans. Those generally require that the pond be fully drained at the end of the season. This is to prevent, to short-circuit the life cycle of invasive bullfrogs that have a longer than one-year process. It's 15, 18 months for bullfrogs to develop from their tadpole stage to the adult stage. So by draining the pond, you know, after August, where the native frogs have already fully completed their life cycle and have, are out of the, moving out of the water source, by draining the pond fully, that would allow the property owner to, to prevent bullfrogs from fully developing, and it also would return that water back to the watershed. Let's see. Also, to further support projects in this watershed, I believe those studies were commissioned, at least the county study was commissioned, based on the initial pool of applicants within the watershed. And so I would, I would ask through the chair that, you know, staff wants to clarify whether or not, you know, of the 9.28 acres that was discussed initially in those studies, how many of those actually have either been withdrawn or denied, just to, just to show how the projects that are proceeding, the landowners that are going to be investing into their business and, and meeting these conditions of approval, you know, that, that they're going to have, you know, that, that the initial assessment of the watershed was for a greater impact than is actually moving forward through this process, to clarify that. And I'm, I'm available for, for any further comments or questions.
I think we may have a couple. Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Mulder. I have a question as well.
Through the chair, just two quick questions on the COAs, just to make sure that you're agreeable to those. They have COA number six, prior to cultivating in 2024, the permit shall remove all greenhouses and infrastructure associated with the three decommissioned cultivation sites on the partial. All infrastructure and debris is associated with decommissioned cultivation areas are to be removed and properly disposed of at a waste management facility. Is that, that something you're aware of and you're agreeable to?
I would have to, I do have to check with the applicant on this particular matter. I believe those structures were decommissioned and sold already, but I will have to verify if, if that requirement, to decommission them is not an issue. To condition it as far as where it should be disposed is a little bit more challenging because that is, you know, material prices have gone up, and if, if those materials have not been sold already, the preference is to actually sell those structures and not destroy them.
Okay. I'll have a follow-up with the staff on that. And then the other one, condition of approval number seven, within two years of the effective date of the permit, the applicant shall demonstrate 520,000 gallons of stored cultivation water using accommodation permitted pond and hard-sided tanks. That's something the applicant's also agreeable to?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That, that was actually the question I wanted to ask was about the timing of the pond. You just read the relevant condition which says that that must be, at least that much storage, not necessarily a million gallons, but the, essentially the pond storage that's proposed must be in place prior to the 2025? Is that what?
So if we approve it today, I think there's like 10 days appeals process, and so 10 days from today, two years from, two years and 10 days from today, it would have to be installed, is the way I read condition of approval number seven.
Two years from today. Can you speak to the timing of when you believe a pond will occur? Do you, do you think it will, do you know what the realistic expectations of the applicant is?
I believe the applicant intends to develop it next year, but, you know, barring economic issues and obviously things are in flux with the market as it stands, so I think two years is sufficient.
Okay. Thanks. Commissioner Mitchell?
Have you, have you driven the entire length of the access road yourself?
I have not driven the entire length for, for, to this date. I was on, I drove, I was on a site visit up to that property, I would say closer to 2016 or 2017.
Okay. Thanks for indulging our questions. If there's nothing else at this time, we, we have the, you know, we know you're there if we have other questions. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else present in the room or on Zoom or phone wishing to comment on this item, the Stay Humboldt project? Okay, not seeing any other hands up, so I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the commission. I recognize you, Commissioner Mulder.
Through the chair to staff, on condition of approval number six, I heard from the applicant's agent that the, the attempt is to try to sell some of the greenhouses and recoup some money there. Is there any way that we could amend that to show proof of sale or, or allow without making them have to throw it away in a waste facility?
Absolutely. We can, we can amend that condition to give them that option.
Okay.
Commissioner Mitchell?
I just wanted to ask if any of our staff had been on, driven down that, the road to the site. Anybody here? I don't believe anybody that is here currently. We did have a staff person who has been, who did visit the site a number of years ago, who does not work for the county anymore.
Okay. And they didn't mention anything about narrow turns or tight turns. It's really hard to tell with a map and.
They didn't mention any, anything like that, no.
Thank you.
But I do know, there is a road evaluation with, with photos, and then, not this particular project, but some of the other projects do have road evaluations that are prepared by engineers.
Yeah, I, I read that, but thank you very much.
I, I just want to make a small note, which is that in the staff report on page five, it says that, when, when we discuss the transition to renewable energy, it says that the operation will transition to the use 100% renewable by the end of 2026. That caught my attention because I think all these other projects have been conditioned to do by January 1st, 2026. And sure enough, the referenced condition of approval A8 actually does specify January 1st, 2026, but just a slight inconsistency with the staff report. Did you have another comment?
I have a motion to make if there's no further comments, but.
I don't see anybody else waving their hand, so.
Okay. I would like to move that we adopt the resolution, which says the following. Find the planning commission to consider the mitigant deck for the CMM L U O and the adendum that was prepared for the Stay Humboldt LLC project, and find that the proposed project complies with the general plan and zoning ordinance, and approves the conditional use permit subject to the recommended conditions of approval. As amended.
So that covers number six amendment. And then I would second that, and just curious, so we could be consistent with all of these projects in the Supply Creek, would you, on condition of approval number 16, requirement of a water meter be installed prior to the 2024 cultivation season?
I believe that's an important consistency, and for this project with specifically.
To the watershed, this is, I mean, that's.
Yes. Yes, I would like to add that condition as well.
Okay, then I'm seconding.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second with an amendment that the motion maker accepted. Any further discussion on this motion? If not, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Scabdal?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Landry? I'm sorry, Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
No.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one. Okay. I think that does mean we've got three more. No, four more, whoops.
I was saying the project.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, okay, that brings us to Evergreen Family Farm LLC conditional use permit and special permits in the Willow Creek area. And I would invite a staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair Levy, Commissioners. My name is Rodney Andel. I'll be presenting for the Evergreen Family Farm LLC. This consists of two projects on two separate adjacent parcels that are run and operated as one farm. There's a conditional use permit and a special permit for PLN 11978 CUP, and it's, and there's special permits for PLN 11980 SP, further referenced by 11978 and 11980, both in Supply Creek watershed. This here shows the project location in reference. This here shows the project location in reference to Willow Creek and the other surrounding This slide here, you'll see the two parcels outlined in white, and they're at the southern area of the Supply Creek watershed, both inside and outside of the watershed. 11978 is a conditional use permit for 10,288 square feet of mixed light and 11,400 square foot of outdoor cultivation with a 2,000 square foot ancillary nursery. 11980 is a special permit for 10,000 square feet of existing full sun outdoor cultivation, and there's a 1,000 square foot ancillary nursery on the adjacent parcel I referenced before. Water for both projects is sourced from a permitted well on APN 52224002, which is the 11978 parcel. The total annual water budget is 312,000 gallons, that's about 9.8 gallons per square foot per year. There's a 30, there is 39,500 gallons of irrigation water storage onsite, and an additional 150,000 gallons is proposed, and that would all be on APN 52224002, which is the larger of the two parcels. Cannabis will be dried on site and further processing will occur off-site at a licensed processing facility until Cabin 3 on the parcel ending in O2, I'm trying to keep it short, which is the larger of the two parcels, which has pretty much all the infrastructure, until that cabin on that parcel is upgraded to commercial standards. Power will be provided by solar and generators, which are on the larger parcel O2. The project is conditioned, as the others, to go to full renewable energy by the beginning of 2026. A maximum of seven employees are proposed to serve both projects, and the special permits that are requested are for work within the SMA associated with the decommissioning of an onstream pond and subsequent remediation activities within the SMA on the O2 parcel, and the removal of a water tank and subsequent remediation activities within the SMA on the O3 parcel. This is a site plan showing both of the parcels. I don't have a pointer, so I'll just kind of try to tell you, if you walk through the larger parcel, there's three cultivation areas, 1, 2, and 3, from right to left, with associated infrastructure and tanks and whatnot, and then on the parcel to the left, the orange area on top is the full sun outdoor cultivation. There's a couple tanks as well next to that area. The recommendation is find the project consistent with the MND adopted for the CMM L U O, make the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and special permit for 11978, and the special permits for 11980, and adopt the resolutions approving the Evergreen Family Farm LLC conditional use permit and special permit 11978, and special permits 11980, subject to the conditions of approval. That's my presentation. I'm available for questions, and also, the project agent is here and available for questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Yandel. Are there any questions for Mr. Yandel at this time before we have public comment? Not at this time? Okay. I will open it for public comment now, and I would invite the projects, the applicant's agent to go first. If you wish to make any kind of presentation, you can have up to 10 minutes, but we don't need you to take all that time if you don't need to.
Be short and sweet.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Paula Pavlich, PR Professional Services, representing Evergreen Family Farms. We've been working diligently with both Cliff and Rodney on this project to ensure that we're meeting the water management plan, and that would be increasing the water storage to 50% of the capacity of an onsite well that produces over 20 gallons per minute, and so the client is amenable to that. We've also been actively engaged with Fish and Wildlife on making sure that we're meeting the conditions of approval for the LSA and completing projects such as the remediation and restoration. The documentation for that should be going into Fish and Wildlife next week, and so those projects should all be completed. I think that's it. If there's any questions, I'm available.
Any questions for the agent? Yes, excuse me, ma'am, I believe we do have Commissioner Mulder.
Sorry, through the chair, did I hear you correctly that you're submitting the information for the LSA, and then the work is complete?
Yeah, we had an onsite visit with Fish and Wildlife, Dave Manthorne came onsite, and we were given a list of items that they wanted corrected at the time. We're working collectively with Timberland, and we have all but one item that we are still waiting for, but they should be completed by next week. The restoration and remediation was already completed, so it's just a matter of documentation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Are there any other members, my apologies, any other members of the public or of the audience or on Zoom or phone that wish to comment on this item? Seeing no other hands, I will close public comments, reserving the right, if necessary, to ask further questions of the applicant's agent. Bring it back to the commission, does anyone else have questions for staff or points of discussion? I'm, I'm looking in the staff report, I, I wrote down something about, in my notes about the CDFW violations that were observed just last month. Am I mixing that up, or was that pertaining to this project? Yes.
I could speak to that, and the agent could probably speak to that as well.
Okay.
There was a site visit done by the agent's staff, along with CDFW, on October 3rd, and one of the cultivation sites was being irrigated with a point of diversion that they weren't supposed to be using, but I come to find out, it was the, it was the, the team, it wasn't the applicant, it was the applicant's team. They were erroneously doing it, they did it in error. From what I understand, they knew CDFW was coming, and because they weren't really aware that they shouldn't be doing that, they left it in, they didn't even try to hide it or be sneaky, but as soon as the, they found out what they were doing was incorrect, it was immediately, it, all of that immediately stopped, all the infrastructure was taken out, and the applicant has relayed to staff that they plan on removing the use of the point of diversion permanently and removing it from the LSA.
Okay.
So that did happen, and it's being, it's been fixed, and it will continue to stay fixed.
Okay. Yes, sure, I would, I would welcome the applicant's agent coming back to supplement that answer.
I will just add to what Rodney says, that the infrastructure has already been removed and the documentation has been provided, so it is actually decommissioned, we just have to move forward to remove it off the LSA and make a modification to the LSA, and then we also plan to go forward and remove the water right. There's no need for the, the use of that water right, so.
Okay, so there is no intention to hang on to that water right?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Mulder?
Thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate that, because I, I didn't dig deeper when I asked the question about the LSA thing. I was kind of encompassing that, and thank you for doing the follow-up question.
Sure.
I just wanted to note that it does look like there is some cultural resources, and there are restrictions as far as, like, motor vehicles, I'm just reading the conditions of approval, and I'm reading that correctly through the chair to staff, correct?
Yes, that's true, and I can actually explain a little about that if you'd like.
I don't need to go in depth, I just thought it was, with this, it's not very often that we see this, so I just thought it'd be good to bring up, so that way it's on the record that it was brought up. I don't know.
That, that is true.
Okay.
I had a couple of conditions of approval I wanted to discuss. The first one has to do with the completion of bringing the structure up to code that is intended to be used for onsite processing eventually. It says that they should provide a timeline, but it doesn't say it has to be within a certain amount of time. So I guess, I was wondering if anyone would be interested in potentially putting a limitation on it, or conversely, I think, they could go on as long as it needs to, because we have condition number, I believe it's, condition number... Number 12, that says that no onsite processing can be approved until approval of the unpermitted onsite wastewater system at Cabin 3 is done, and I guess since this is not a condition of approval, then it would be appropriate and consistent for me to ask for that one to just have a additional and provide evidence of compliance there to...
Sorry, can you just restate that, what your final point was there?
Yes, I, I believe I understand that they can't do processing onsite until they've done ADA improvements and wastewater treatment system improvements, and because to ensure compliance with that, we have this condition of approval number 12, that says no onsite processing, including trimming and packaging, can be approved until approval of the unpermitted onsite wastewater treatment system at Cabin number 3.
Yeah.
So I would just say comma, and the applicant shall provide evidence of compliance of this condition at the annual inspection.
Could I point something out to the commission? There's a couple ways this works. One is condition number 7, which is probably a bit of a catch-all, but it does require permitting all structures that are going to be used for the cannabis activities, and if it's going to be used as a commercial cannabis processing facility, it's got to be permitted as such. Then if you go up to condition number 6, it identifies that conditions number 7 through 15 shall be specified in a compliance agreement, and that, and that compliance agreement needs to be done within 60 days. The compliance agreement emanates from the ordinance, which provides that an applicant has one year to develop a plan to get those things done, and then at the end of two years, the work's got to be done.
Right. Okay. Well...
He was first.
Okay.
I, I guess I just wanted to add, I, I saw that, and that, what I tried to preface the, the comment about, COA number 12 about, is that either we could make sure it was a timeline that was potentially shorter, that could make proving compliance with 12 not a big deal, or lesser of a deal, or just add, I guess, if not being provided with receipts, how would an onsite inspection verify COA number 12?
So until they have a permitted facility, which would include a building that complies with commercial standards for processing, and they have an ADA accessible restroom facility, which would then require the onsite wastewater treatment facility, they can't process onsite.
And how do we know that they have, or how do we prove that they've complied with that?
Commissioner Mulder, you had your hand up. I, I do see you, ma'am, and, and, are you, are you wishing to, to speak to this precise point? Okay, go ahead.
Just as a consultant, one of the things that does provide you with proof, and the county, I believe, has more access to this proof, is the track and trace system. The product goes offsite, the manifestor there, the documents have to be in a compliance binder onsite for all state inspections. That is, that is a requirement, so that proof exists, and so if someone is not processing onsite, they should have that documentation. So I believe the county has access to it, and they inspect, I go on every inspection with the county and state, that binder is available to the inspectors, and they do review it, it's there and available, and then once they are able to process onsite, they also have to have licenses to do so. So I think, I think your documentation is there, and I was just wanting to answer that question before.
Thank you. Commissioner Mulder?
So, I'm going to try to avoid, like, I hear your concern, and I agree with it, I think there's a process in place. After Commissioner O'Neill's, in, like, reminding me not to add stuff earlier in a project, I'm not going to jump into the weeds of trying to add conditions, and I, I would feel that we have to trust that the process is there, and trust that process, and really look at the land use and the impacts, and what impact are we trying to avoid? So I couldn't, if we tried adding something in there, I, I couldn't be supportive of that, because it would be against what I already withdrew a motion, one, two, maybe three projects ago. So with that, actually, I'm just going to go out there and make the motion to approve both projects with the conditions of approval that, as they state, but I would like to amend condition of approval 11 to state, as the other projects have, to be consistent, that prior to the 2024 cultivation season, water meters shall be installed.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mulder, seconded by Commissioner Scavdall. Discussion on the motion.
I would like to make a proposed amendment to the motion, and amending, an amending motion, as it were, that we modify condition 12 simply for the purposes of having whoever's going to be inspecting every year to know that what already exists, which is evidence of compliance of this, meaning that, that it was processed offsite or not processed at all, or manufactured and frozen, that they look at that, and that, so condition number 12, I'm moving that we add, and the applicant shall make available evidence to support use of offsite processing and packaging, or trimming and packaging.
I believe the procedure is that we vote on the...
You'd need a second.
Oh, we need a second for the amendment. Okay.
I refuse to second that.
Yes, we do need a second on the amendment, if we're even going to vote on that amendment.
I think if we're going to add that clarification, it belongs in the sec, in the, and I don't know which condition it is, the condition requiring the annual inspection. So if you're going to add it, I'd put it, I'm just, that's, that's where I think it belongs.
Are you saying that's what it would take for you to second it, or are you just suggesting that'd be a better place? So...
Let me answer the question.
Yes, Commissioner Scavdall.
Both.
Then I would amend my amending motion to modify the condition on onsite inspections.
Condition 9 in the second section.
Condition 9.
I think it is.
To add, including providing access to documentation, acknowledging that offsite processing or manufacturing was the licensed processing and manufacturing was the way that it left.
Oh...
Until the, until the building is built and approved and authorized.
Can you restate that one more time, just so we're clear, what, what the amendment is? I believe Commissioner Scavdall seconded.
So, is it okay if I just say what he said?
Well, condition 9, evidence shall be provided to county staff during annual inspections to confirm the continued use of portable toilets and offsite processing to serve the needs of Colts, Colts, are documented until Cabin 3 is permitted.
Okay.
I mean, that's the issue.
Okay, I think that's sufficiently clear for this discussion, Commissioner Mulder, and then Commissioner O'Neill.
So through the chair to county council, if this motion was approved as amended, could... So through the chair to County Council, if this motion was approved as amended, could the applicant consider, or could the applicant claim discrimination as this would be the first project that I'm aware of in over a thousand projects that has this condition of approval?
Applicants, am I on? Applicants can claim anything they want, doesn't mean they're going to be successful in court. I think the main thing is, is when you look at discrimination claims, you have to see whether there's a suspect class and other things associated with it.
So what, oh, through the chair. When conditions are placed, there has to be findings or evidence presented. I know you can't say if it is, but I'm just going to go say that I personally feel that there hasn't been the findings or evidence presented to make this additional condition of approval.
Commissioner O'Neill.
You could say there's a building there that's not permitted to do this, and they've already shown evidence that they're not properly trained to not do something they're not supposed to do because they were doing a diversion on October 3rd, so therefore this one is different.
Okay, well, briefly, but then let's get to voting on this.
If, to the extent we need to do so, I would encourage that the findings regarding the three existing conditions regarding the unpermitted onsite wastewater treatment, the lack of ADA compliance, and the ongoing building code violations, because of that, we want to ensure that no onsite, no employees are at risk. So that's why I felt the, the desire to make the amendment.
Okay, and, and with respect, I, I'm not comfortable with imposing this condition at this time in the absence of a broader discussion about what other safeguards may be in place and whether the system isn't or isn't working and whether this is a problem. But, you know, that's, you're right to make the amendment. I will now call for a vote on that amendment to the motion. I guess we should have a roll call on that amendment. Yes, we're voting on Brian's amendment, Commissioner Mitchell's amendment, seconded by Commissioner Scavdall, that would add, that would alter the conditions and add the language that was discussed.
Commissioner Scavdall?
No.
Commissioner Mulder?
No.
Commissioner Levy?
No.
Commissioner O'Neill?
No.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment fails, but we do already have a motion to approve, a motion that Commissioner Mulder made originally.
To approve the project with the minor amendment of the, I think it's condition of approval number 11, basically for the water, just the water meter shall be installed prior to 2020.
Shall be installed for, prior to the cultivation next season, as we've been doing for all these Supply Creek projects. Okay. Yes.
To discuss the motion now that, as it lays on the table, I just want to say that I'm going to continue to consistently make this request. However, um, I don't feel like I should vote against an entire project because we decided as a group that that wasn't something we're going to do, so I don't want it to be, I want you to know that I'm going to support the project even though I still have that reservation.
Okay.
I hear you, and I'm looking at the clock that we've debated this topic for probably an extra hour today, and some of us have about an hour and seven minute commute to our home. And if we're going to change policy, it'd be good to go through it a different process where we rewrite, have a agenda item, write a letter of requesting changing policy to the Board of Supervisors, then get an okay and go through it that way.
Like we did with the generator expiration date. Thank you.
Okay, with all that said, can we now have a roll call vote on the motion to approve the Evergreen Family Farms, I believe that's what it's called, isn't it?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
No.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Scavdall?
Yes.
That, the motion passes four to one. The Evergreen Family Farm CUP and special permit is approved with conditions as amended. Okay, three more. Let's see if we can actually get through these. The next is Mojo Mountain LLC conditional use permit, and I would welcome a staff report on that project.
Thank you, Chair Levy. Cliff Johnson with the County Planning and Building Department. I'm going to present the Mojo Mountain conditional use permit and special permit request. So this is showing you the location. We've talked about the location quite a bit already, but here is showing you the parcel in relation to the Supply Creek watershed and to the Hoopa Square. You can see it's one parcel removed. It's approximately 400 acre parcel located entirely within the Supply Creek watershed. The request is for continued cultivation of 35,025 square feet of outdoor cannabis. There is a proposed 3,500 square foot nursery, estimated annual irrigation 525,000 gallons. Currently, the source of water is a permitted groundwater well, which has very limited productivity. When it was installed, it was tested at about two gallons per minute. There's existing water storage of approximately 19,000 gallons. There is also two surface water diversions on the property that help to provide water. The applicant is proposing a 500,000 gallon rainwater catchment tank. And so with the rainwater catchment tank, the total water storage would be 519,000, which is just shy of that 525,000 gallons that is needed annually. Electricity is currently sourced from two smaller Honda generators, and we did add a condition of approval to the draft conditions of approval here requiring conversion to renewable energy by 2026. Here you can see the property in question. I'm not going to show you the site plan because it's kind of, a lot of these site plans are kind of messy and they show up better in your staff report. But here, there are four primary cultivation areas that are shown here in green, and then that blue dot that comes up in the center is the proposed 500,000 gallon rainwater catchment tank. Of note is that in 2021, CDFW visited the site and issued them a notice of violation for unpermitted stream diversions. As a result of that, the Department of Cannabis Control revoked their state license. The applicant did file a, essentially a lawsuit against DCC to have their license reinstated. And the result of the litigation actually ended up being a settlement agreement with DCC and the applicant, and that settlement agreement is attached to your staff report, I believe, in which the applicant did not admit to any illegal surface water diversions, however, did agree to not cultivate, and DCC agreed they would not reinstate the license until there was verification from CDFW of full compliance with the LSAA that was subsequently issued. And so to capture some of the concerns, including the concerns that have been, that came out of the settlement agreement, some notable conditions of approval, 100% renewable energy by 2026. Condition of approval number 18 is intended to implement that settlement agreement, which is that there's no cultivation allowed until for full compliance with the LSAA. Condition of approval 19, we are suggesting that they remove, be conditioned to remove the proposed nursery because while that nursery is 10% of the size of the cultivation area, which is consistent with what we have allowed in the past, there was no evidence of a nursery on the site before 2016 that was presented. And because this property is TPZ, we do not consider that they should be allowed to expand their operations beyond what was, was there in 2016 or what is necessary to meet state and county requirements. And then condition of approval number 20 is to install a minimum of 500,000 gallons of water storage prior to cultivating and to ensure and provide documentation that that storage has been filled to capacity. And so with that, we're recommending that you find that you consider the MND that was done for the ordinance and the addendum prepared for this project, make the findings for approval, and approve the permit subject to the recommended conditions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and I really appreciate you walking us through the particular conditions that apply to the unique circumstances of this project. Any questions for Mr. Johnson at this time? If not, then I will open public comments and invite the applicant or the applicant's agent to come up and make a brief presentation, as I see he is already headed up here. Welcome, Mr. White.
Good evening, Chair Levy and the commission and through the, through the chair and the commission and staff. I appreciate your hard work, and it's a late evening this evening. I know we've all put in a lot. Cliff did a good job presenting the facts of the project. There were recent updates submitted on this project that reflect the information Cliff went through from the various agreements and issues that occurred on the property. There were confusion between operators and owners that were resolved. The commitment on the 500,000 gallon tank is an open top water tank that will allow rain to fall into the tank in combination with an existing seasonal diversion that has an existing SIUR with the State Water Board. The diversion period is November 1st to March 31st, and a revised LSA agreement addressing all of the concerns has already been submitted to CDFW, so the process to resolve and satisfy that is already underway. The project is transitioning to solar. The property owners are committed to the road maintenance, and as part of that, there is a site management plan that has been submitted to the State Water Board and is also included in the project materials and requires that road grading and rolling dips and lots of improvements are made throughout the roadway on the property. I am here and available to answer any questions that you may have, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. White. Any questions at this time? Okay, I think not. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
So, sorry, I am still in public comment. Are there any other members of the public who may wish to comment on this, either in person or Zoom or phone? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for consideration. Anybody have thoughts? Are we fully satisfied with this one?
I would just comment that there was, you know, reading through this, there was some red flags. The staff report, I felt, was really, really good at presenting everything and kind of like basically, CDFW has to sign off on this project before it can go forward with cultivation, so that's going to take care of your water resources, your environmental resources. It's kind of hard to have hangups, I think, for, I mean, for me personally, what I, once I read through it, so.
Yeah.
I don't want to be the only one making motions today, so I'm going to kind of leave it up to someone else, but.
Well, as the chair, I, I never really make a motion, but I, I will say that I, I echo what you just said, and I think, given the conditions that have been attached here, given particularly that one about CDs having, CDFW signing off, that their concerns have been met, I'm satisfied that, that all significant impacts will be mitigated.
A general comment about this, I'm the owner and my employees are doing things that shouldn't be done, and I think that they need to be properly trained because you own the property, you're responsible for your, what your employees do, and they know not to divert water, and they know not to do some of the, the things that they're doing. And so if you're not training them because you live in another state, that still is your responsibility.
So I will make a motion to approve this project with the recommended conditions of approval, to be consistent, even though I believe the LSA would take care of the water meter before cultivation, I'll just say amend condition of approval number 10, that water meters shall be installed prior to any cultivation, to be redundant and consistent.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mulder.
I'll second that and say I agree with that addition. I think it's important to be able to verify even, and be consistent, so.
Okay. Commissioner Mitchell seconded the motion. Any further discussion on this motion? Okay, then I'll have a, I'll call again for a roll call vote. Laura, please.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
No.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Scavdall?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four, one. The Mojo Mountain conditional use permit is approved with commission, with conditions as amended. We now come to Three Creek Holdings LLC conditional use permit, and I would welcome a staff report.
Thank you, Chair Levy. Members of commission, Stephen Santos, senior planner, presenting the Three Creeks Holding LLC project. Just waiting for the screen share to happen. This is the penultimate presentation for the night, so I'll try and be swift. The project is located in the same Supply Creek area as all the rest of the projects this evening. Here is the location of the parcel relative to the watershed boundaries and the Hoopa Square. It's an approximately 200 acre legal parcel zone TPZ with a land use designation of T. The proposal is for 20,000 square feet of existing outdoor cannabis cultivation and a 1,650 square foot ancillary nursery. I want to point out at this moment in time that there was a requested change by the applicant in the project description after noticing was published. Noticing was published for 10,000 square feet of mixed light and 10,000 square feet of outdoor. And then after that, the applicant said, hey, can I just do outdoor? And I said, yes, you can make that change at this, this time. So that, so I just wanted to point that out, and that's why you'll see slight differences, and we'll need to update the resolution to, to reflect that. But the, the proposal with the applicant's request and staff's agreement is for 20,000 square feet of outdoor. Okay, the water is from a permitted well, and annual, annual water usage is estimated at 189,000 gallons per year. This is a highly productive well, 20 gallons per minute, and so that's a gusher. Currently, there's only 7,500 gallons of water storage, and staff is recommending an additional 87,000 gallons of storage to total 94,500, which will be 50% of annual water usage. I want to point out that CDFW requested a total of 150,000 gallons, which would be somewhere around 79% of annual water usage. But when staff considered that request, staff could not find any evidence justifying such a high percentage of storage, especially given the productivity of the well at 20 gallons per minute. So staff recommendation is just for the 50%. Processing will occur offsite at a licensed processing facility, meaning if there is trimming, that it will occur at a licensed facility. The project is conditioned to migrate electricity sourcing to all renewables by January 1st to 2026, and there is onsite relocation and restoration involved in the project. In anticipation of some of the, the discussion, I do want to point out condition number A13, which relates to the metering of wells, and I originally wrote the condition saying within 90 days of the effective date of the permit. That's a little bit, potentially a little bit sooner than some of the other conditions the planning commission has been imposing, but there is a timeframe condition in this instance for this project, so I just wanted to point it out that it was there in A13. Okay, here is the site plan. I don't have laser pointer capabilities. The little freckle sort of in the center, that is the historic cultivation area that is being retired and restored, and that cultivation. is being retired and restored, and that cultivation is going to be moved and consolidated in the main cultivation area up there in the northwest portion of the parcel. So staff is recommending approval of the project, recommending that the Commission find the project consistent with the MND, make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit, and adopt the resolution approving the Three Creeks Holdings LLC special permit and conditions of approval.
Thank you very much. Questions for Mr. Santos before we go to public comment?
I have a question. So, there's a requirement for restoration plans for the former cultivation site, and then there's requirements to get permits for doing grading and already existing grading, like that wasn't, that wasn't permitted. I'm, I guess I'm just asking if they graded as part of the previous cultivation site, are they, are they required to put it back to its original condition, or just get it permitted?
It depends on what is best and what was done. In this instance, there was no grading in the, in the site that's being restored. There is just some leftover infrastructure that needs to be removed, and then there needs to be some follow-up with a qualified professional to see if we need to do any proactive, if the applicant needs to do any proactive revegetation.
So just to be clear, when it says get permits for unpermitted grading, that's just a general requirement, not specific to this?
It's not specific to this restoration area, but it is specific for the cultivation areas that will continue in operation.
I see. Thank you.
I have a quick question. I note, since we're looking at the conditions, you know, specifically, that you, that condition 11 specifies that the water storage capacity should be increased to 94,500 gallons. It doesn't specify when that must occur by. When is your expectation of when that will or should occur?
It is specified because the way these conditions are constructed and often constructed when there's existing cultivation, which means there's also a compliance agreement.
Right.
You'll see a condition early in the conditions of approval that talk about what is included in that compliance agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so in, do I not have that? There you go. Oh, sorry, that's condition one, A1. So, condition A1 says conditions of approval A7 through A11 will be included in the compliance agreement. The compliance agreement term is two years, and so they have two years to do the water storage.
Yeah, so it is, as we discussed, that's sort of the default under the ordinance, that, that the work must be completed within two years.
If it's in a compliance agreement.
If it's in a compliance agreement.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. And given the well productivity, it's not a concern, in this case, that they would be going for the next potentially two cultivation seasons with pretty minimal storage.
It didn't catch my eye in particular, because the pump test was conducted in 2013, which is one of the driest years, or the driest recorded year in the years that we have data, at least through the PRISM website. So I took those two pieces of data, the 20 gallons per minute pump test occurring in the worst drought year we've had on record, saying that they can continue to rely on this well until they can, you know, phase these in.
Got it. Thank you. I guess I'll, any other questions right now before I open public comment? I do just want to see if there's anyone in the audience, or, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
One question.
No, thanks.
Not as familiar with the different types of cultivation, so when you, when we were going to do mixed light and outdoor, and then we changed now to full outdoor, does that impact the water supply requirement?
So the, it can potentially impact the water needs in terms of needing to go down, because often mixed light is multiple cycles and often.
So mixed light uses more typically?
It really depends, yeah, on the strain and, and approaches. Yeah, it varies significantly.
I would just add, you know, what we have seemed to have found is that if you're just comparing one run of mixed light and one run of outdoor, outdoor often is going to require more, but mixed light usually has more runs.
But staff did conclude that the request to convert to all outdoor did represent a decline in the potential impacts, because it was no longer going to use artificial light in the, on the cultivation side of things.
Thank you.
Okay, I do just want to see if there's anyone in the audience or on Zoom or phone who wishes to comment on this item. Not seeing any hands up, I will close public comment, bring it back to the Commission for any further discussion or questions. I would very briefly just wanted to ask, you know, the, your, since we are going to be relying, since, since we're permitting them to take potentially a couple of years before they have all the storage installed, the, you said that the, the well, sorry, I just had the language here. Basically, you say in the staff report that the staff believes that the well is not hydrologically connected, given its location, given its distance from stream flows and depth, but I didn't see the details of like how far. Now, maybe I, maybe I missed that.
In the first paragraph on page three in the Water Resources section, last couple sentences, the well is located approximately 900 feet from an unentranceary that flows into Supply Creek.
It is there.
Yeah.
Thank you. I was looking in the wrong place, and I now see that that information is provided. I mean, I understand that this project, like most, there's no hydrogeologist report to rely on, so you have to make your own assessment and back that up as to why we believe this is a case where it's not impacting stream flows. I see that data, and I defer to your judgment. Any other questions or comments?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
Further comments?
I'm not seeing anybody else raise their hand, so.
Are you, just personally? Yeah. You okay? Do you go?
Let me get through this, I have seven minutes, there's just a few words I need to put in.
I'm sorry. I'll make this quick. I move that we adopt the resolution, which makes the findings A, B, and C as listed in the agenda. The end.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, and we note that, as Mr. Santos already pointed out, the amendment that we had been making to the conditions is already more than met by your existing condition concerning the timing of water meters, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion.
Quick question, the, through the Chair to staff, would it be better to be consistent as we've done on all the other projects and say prior to, or stick with the more stringent 90-day? And I really, doesn't bother me either way, I just want to make sure we're consistent.
I don't, I don't have a point of view, it's, it's up to the Commission's discretion.
It's always good to be consistent.
Okay, yeah, i- if, if there wasn't some, some project-specific reason for being so stringent about the timing of that, and just trying to make sure that it happened in a timely fashion, then why don't we go with what we've been doing? So, the motion was made. Do you, can someone amend that motion?
I find to amend it to include the consistent language regarding the timing of the water flow meters?
Yes, and that was pertaining to condition 13, yes. Great, and who seconded it?
I did, and I'm fine with that amendment.
Great, thanks. So we have a motion and a second. Laura, can we have a roll call vote, please, on this?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
No.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Scabdal?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four to one, and that brings us to our last project. We are getting very, very late and close to when we need to be done, but I think perhaps we can get through the Four Ponds project pretty quickly.
Once again, I'm Rodney Yandel. I'll be presenting the Four Ponds LLC special permits, and I, I'm last. Yeah? All right. So this is Four Ponds LLC, it's a special permit in the Willow Creek area. Once again, we have our project location, right there, south of the Hoopa Reservation. The parcel outlined in white at the bottom there is the parcel in question. As you can see, the majority of the parcel is outside of the Supply Creek watershed. I think half of one of the cultivation sites is actually within that watershed, and I'd like to point out the well is outside of that watershed.
Mm-hmm.
It's a conditional use permit for 10,000 square feet of existing outdoor cannabis cultivation and a 275-foot, square foot, sorry, 275-square-foot ancillary nursery, water sourced from a permitted well. The annual water budget is 116,800 gallons, which is about 11.7 gallons per square foot per year. There is 18,200 gallons of irrigation water storage onsite, and an additional 60,000 gallons is proposed. Cannabis will be dried and bucked onsite and then processed offsite at a licensed processing facility. Power is provided by solar and generators, and no employees are proposed, and as with the other projects, it's conditioned to move to renewable power by the beginning of 2026. The special permit that's being requested is for work within the streamside management area associated with the removal of two water tanks and remediation activities within the SMA. Here's the site plan, and with the lack of a pointer, I can just say that up in the left, upper left-hand corner, we have a couple of the little cultivation areas and some ancillary features, and over in the top right, we have the remainder of the cultivation area and, or another cultivation area and some ancillary features, and in the southernmost right-hand corner, there is an additional cultivation area. So there's three different discrete areas. You know, let me, let me back up. In the upper right-hand corner, that is just structures associated with the project. I can't really see it very well from here, so, okay.
We'll make sure we have a laser pointer for next time.
I didn't even have my glasses on. So, same recommendation, find the project consistent with the MMD, adopted for the CMMLUO, make all the required findings for approval of these special permits, and adopt the resolution approving the Four Ponds LLC special permits, subject to the conditions of approval. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be available for questions if need be.
Thank you. Any initial questions at this time from Mr. Yandel? Nope. Okay, that was clear and quick, and I do want to open it up to public comment. I recognize that the agent for this project is still with us, thank you, but, and if we have questions, we can address them to you. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on this project? Not seeing any hands up in the room or on Zoom, I will close public comment and bring it back to the Commission. Thoughts on this one?
If there's no further thoughts, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I don't see anyone objecting to that, or?
I have some thoughts on it.
Okay.
Couple of questions.
Hold off for Mr., for Commissioner Scabdal?
On the, on the last project, we had a well that produced 20 gallons a minute, and Fish and Wildlife asked for 150,000 of storage. This, and they're asking for that in case the well fails, right? And we didn't, we didn't go with their recommendation. This project has a well that produces two gallons a minute, and Fish and Wildlife is asking for 75,000 gallons of storage. It seems like, are we still falling short of what Fish and Wildlife is asking for?
No.
That's what I'm trying to confirm.
The slideshow, they had a, they had a certain amount of, of storage, I believe around 18,005.
Right.
And they're, they're proposing on their own to add 60, which would take it up to over 78,000 gallons.
Okay.
And I did speak with the applicant's agent, and though the well report says two gallons a minute, the applicant is adamant that it produces three gallons a minute, and that it's always been reliable and has never run dry. And it's, uh.
Okay.
Good faith on just having to believe that that's true. And then CDFW asked for 75, and the applicant proposed 78.
Okay.
Which is, as you noted, two-thirds of the, or more of the annual water budget.
67%.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to clarify that we are meeting or exceeding the recommendation by Fish and Wildlife.
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Any other comments? I'm, I think that was a great point to raise, Commissioner Scabdal, but I'm satisfied that we're.
Just if the Commission's inclined to make, oh, it is there. I'm going to make sure that that was in the project description, but it's in the project description within the resolutions, so.
Yeah, yep. Okay, great. Commissioner Mitchell?
Mr. Chairman, I happily move that we adopt the resolution, which does the following: Finds Planning Commission has considered the MITNEC deck previously adopted for the CMMLUO, as well as the addendum to the MITNEC deck that was prepared for the Four Ponds LLC project, and finds it to propose project compliance with the general plan and zoning ordinance, and approves the Four Ponds LLC special permit, subject to the recommended conditions of approval.
I would second that. If we could add this condition of approval, number nine, as we have with other projects in this watershed, if the water meters could be installed prior to the 2024 cultivation season?
So, that's acceptable.
Yeah.
Is that condition number nine?
It's, it's not condition number nine.
Yeah.
In fact, on, just a little disclaimer, on, on all the ones I wrote for this, I had that you need to have a water meter in the Section A of the conditions, and then also in the ongoing requirements, I had that they shall maintain the water meter and have records available for our staff yearly, but on this one, for some reason, I omitted that, the condition to actually get water meters in Section A of the conditions of approval. Cliff is actually drafting that now, and I will tidy all that up.
Condition number 18.
It'll be condition 18, but I'm going to have to bump it up so it's included in the compliance agreement. But I will, I will, I will fix all that tomorrow.
Okay.
So, my bad on that, because I was saying, I was in Section B, and I was on number nine, shall maintain, and I just, I was looking for the water meter one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just had that in as condition 18, and we're good.
Or, or wherever it's most appropriate in the condition.
Wherever it's most appropriate, that's way better language.
I'll fix it tomorrow.
Okay. Thanks for catching that, Mr. Yandel. And with that said, we have a motion seconded by, motion by Commissioner Mitchell, seconded by Commissioner Mulder. Any further discussion before we vote? No. Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please, Laura?
Commissioner Scabdal?
Yes.
Commissioner Levy?
Yes.
Commissioner Mulder?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
No.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four to one, and that, for the Four Ponds LLC special permits. Okay, that brings us to the end of the public hearings. We have no items pulled from consent. Director Ford, is there anything you wanted to briefly make us aware of under report from Planner?
I'm going to make it extraordinarily brief, given the time, and just remind everybody that there is a meeting next week where we will be working on the short-term rental ordinance, and so we have a staff report coming to you tomorrow.
Great. Thanks so much for making it possible to have that special meeting a week from today. And again, in case you didn't hear it at the beginning, there was an error in the printed agenda for tonight, which said that the next meeting, next Thursday, would be at 5:30. It's not, it's going to be at 6 o'clock, as per normal. And any Planning Commission discussion items? All right, well, thank you all for your long work and patience, and we will adjourn this meeting. this meeting at 9:27.